Without form, we started. Just I don't want to get to twenty minutes and we have to cancel. Good afternoon. We'll be calling the meeting to order. We start off with a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One has decided for any intent? You may be seated. Just for the public to be aware, we're starting this meeting because we only have twenty minutes as per Tomah rules. Uh, we don't need a quorum.
Actually, you have, we do have a quorum now.
Oh, we've got a quorum now. There we go. Fantastic. Mr. Secretary, would you please have a call roll call, please?
Honorable Mayor Dr. Victor D. Trevino. Honorable Councilmember District One, Gilbert Gonzalez. Honorable Councilmember District Two, Ricardo Rangel Junior. Honorable Councilmember District Three, Melissa Sigarroa. Honorable Councilmember District Four, Ricardo Rick Garza.
I'm here.
Honorable Councilmember District Five, Ruben Gutierrez Junior.
Present.
Honorable Councilmember District Six, Dr. Tyler King. Honorable Mayor Pro Temp, Vanessa Perez. Honorable Councilmember District Eight, Alyssa Sigarroa. You have a quorum.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Secretary, any citizens' comments?
No public comments.
Okay. And we'll move to number five, number one, discussion with possible action on fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-seven, twenty-six. Budget priorities, including financial needs and the impacts of the upcoming bond referendum to guide financial planning and key funding allocations and any matters incident there.
Mr. Secretary, before you start, can I have the chair reflect?
Go ahead.
Sir, I just, uh, for the record, just want to say thank you to all the directors, staff, everybody that's here. I see we have the chambers as well. I appreciate it for coming out, you know, having that, giving your divided attention to all of us. You know, for being here at time. Thank you. I know you have so much, you have a busy, a busy schedule. Uh, se los agradecemos. I appreciate it so much for taking your time to understand and give us direction of everything that's, that you guys are asking for and what the, what the city needs. Uh, you're the professionals. We're just here to hear you out, try to make as much sense and know what we're doing. You know, to, to change the, to change, to pass these bonds. So appreciate it. Uh, I hope we do the, the best to our ability and appreciate your time for being here.
Thank you, Councilmember. On the same note, thank you all for being punctual. I apologize on behalf of my colleagues for not being here. But nonetheless, we'll get the meeting rolling, going, and I appreciate you all being here. There are certain things that we need to clarify. There's numbers being thrown out there in the public stating the amounts of taxes will go up if this bond should pass, which are completely false. So I'm glad that we're here. I'm glad that you all are here. The public is here. The chamber is here. Because fact of the matter is, a lot of the information being passed out there is simply false. So any questions? I, I do ask the public to please, please come, join these meetings, watch these meetings, get informed, because a lot of information that's being put out there, that is simply not true. Mr. Neb, if you'd like to continue with the discussion.
Councilmembers, um, yeah, today, today is, uh, going to be the budget workshop. We, my understanding based upon staff, uh, input and everything is that we've never had a conversation with the city council this early in the budget cycle. But this is the part of, of how we, we should be creating our budgets. Uh, one, we build the budget off of your vision. The things that are, that are important to you. We, we need to be talking earlier within this budget cycle. And so we wanted to incorporate you earlier into the budget. This year, we are doing a lot of different changes. You'll hear all about within that. But we'll talk about some of the strategic initiatives that we know that are out there percolating. We'll talk about the budgets that, uh, you all influence as well too, like the district budgets and, and all of that information. We're gonna walk through, uh, predominantly today, the, I guess, the nature of how we're trying to build the budgets is that we need to start with the revenue. Essentially, how much revenue are we going to have in order to build the expenses that are there? We are required by state law to have a balanced budget. It cannot be, we're not like the federal government where we can create money out of wherever. Uh, we have to have a balanced budget by state law. And so that means-
We can't print money in the radio?
We cannot print money.
That's unbelievable. Yeah.
However, maybe, maybe we should. I don't know. No, but the, but the whole idea is that, um, we have to have a balanced budget where the revenue and the expenses match up. The revenue comes from a lot of different sources and so that, that's why we want to talk about the revenue first. We do know that, uh, there is only so much new revenue that's generated unless we start changing fees, changing whatever that structure. We have caps on our property tax, but there are some, there's some opportunities within all of this. For you, as we build this out, this budget, it becomes a prioritization of the budget as to what's the most important all the way through until we've balanced it out. And, uh, we don't normally try to leave much money left on the table because there's a lot of needs out there for our community and we want to look through that. The bond referendum section of this conversation, when, when we get to it. Uh, again, the bond referendum is a, is a conversation with the public. It is us going out to the public saying, hey, here's some of the needs we have. Can you help us do these needs? We're not forcing anything on anybody. What, what we are doing is we're asking the public to consider the options that are out there. And so we have, we, we followed up on some of that. I will share, uh, within that section, some of the alternatives that we may have to us if the, if the bond referendum wasn't to be successful. Most of our bond referendums are on basic needs. For most of it, it is all basic needs where it's repairs of buildings, it's, it's improvements of those systems. There are some new things as well too, but it offsets the cost of maintaining stuff that has been loved to death. So we're gonna walk through that. Uh, I'm gonna keep my, uh, uh, a lot of the information, uh, more brief on this. And, but I, I, we have it, we have it all laid out to kind of walk through these steps. So we are gonna work on a clear foundation. We want to align our priorities. The city's priorities should be the vision of the council first, and that's why we're, why I'm building it this manner for this, this budget year. This is the first time that we've, we've invited you in early. Uh, you're gonna get to see how some of the sausage is made as we, as we walk through the steps because there's a lot of conversations that go through that. This will be a more transparent and communication process. I believe that the, the bond referendum was actually a more transparent system where we're going to the public saying, this is what our needs are, rather than just initiating something on top of the, on, on top of that. We'll talk a little bit more about that as we get to that. Uh, I want to prepare for the key financial considerations. And I want to talk a little bit about the district level engagement because, uh, there's, there's been some conversations about how that fits within our model. And just know that, uh, within all of our research and everything, we are looking at the cities like Austin, San Antonio, Corpus Christi, McAllen. We're looking at a lot of our comparable cities and we're saying, we're, we're trying to steal the best of what they are doing and bringing it here with us as well too. So, um, I'm going to stop my part of the presentation right at that point. And we're gonna bring up, uh, Mr. Sparza. He's going to cover, uh, the revenue estimates and, uh, kind of the overview of the annual budget process, key dates, and then the preliminary revenue estimates, which is gonna temper the next part of the conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your name for the record, please.
Mr. Sparza with the Budget Department for the record. Honorable Mayor and Council, uh, Mr. Sparza again for the record. Uh, I will be talking about the strategic meeting for the budget, uh, for the going over the fiscal year twenty-five current budget that we're working on. And I will also be looking at some of the projection revenues that we have seen preliminarily right now at this early stage. But before I get into the PowerPoint, I do wanna, uh, advise council and the public that the, uh, we received the, uh, GFWA award for the distinguished budget presentation for the budget year of effective October first, twenty twenty-four. This is an award that is, uh, so we submit our budget last year to the GFWA for their review. Our, our submission is in December. We normally are on March get notified if we receive the award. So, uh, this is the, uh, third year that my staff, uh, as when I came in as the Budget Director have been working and this is the, uh, third, uh, recognition that we have. So I'd like to, uh, you know, thank my staff for their dedication and support in, in continuing this, uh, GFWA award that we, the Budget Department has been getting, uh, from years.
Thank you very much, staff. Appreciate that a lot. Thank you. Absolutely. You all can please stand. Doing a wonderful job, guys. Thank you for all that number crunching. I can imagine the miracles you all have to work out here, in there. Thank you.
The first slide that I have is the, uh, table of, of contents of the material that we're gonna be covering. Uh, like Mr. Neb mentioned, we're gonna cover the budget calendar with some of the key dates that we have in during, in the upcoming months. We're gonna go over some of budget, some budget loss rates, some definishes, the different governmental types that we have within the city of Laredo. We will also cover the consolidated budget and what the consolidated budget is. Within the consolidated, consolidated budget, we do have the enterprise funds. We have the internal service, uh, funds. We have special revenues. And we have our main general fund revenue. And the numbers above each one of these category correlates to the page number on the presentation. So we will also be discussing and, and talking about the budget process that we've done in the past and the new strategies as we go forward with our proposed fiscal year twenty-six, uh, budget as we develop that with the departments in conjunction with management and, and council's, uh, support and direction as well. We will be talking about some preliminary general fund revenues, uh, that, that we have to work with in balancing our budget for a general fund. So with that takes us to our calendar, our budget calendar. And our budget calendar here starts in February. However, we do start, like I mentioned, we submit our final draft or of our adopted budget to GFWA for their review. So as soon as we finish that, we start in January and we start creating our different, uh, levels for the departments to enter their information. In the month of February, we take up our notice to our departments. We also start conducting budget department trainings with the different departments. We have some general, uh, sessions and we also have one-to-one trainings with the departments. March, which is the month that we're in right now, uh, we, in March, we have to complete our internal service funds. Uh, and I'll go into detail of what internal service funds we have. But the reason we need to finish those prior to is that there are funds that have, like our health and wellness, that we need to determine our in, proposed insurance medical rates, our insurance rate, our IT services that we need.
Excuse me. May the record show that Councilmember Tyler King is present. Thank you. Thank you.
And one of the other ones is our, our fleet internal service. We also finish up the revenues and expenditures that are due from the departments in March. This year, we have the council strategic meetings, which is today. Uh, this is what we're covering in March. We'll be, also be having budget town hall meetings as per, uh, request. We will be submitting this, uh, Wednesday, we'll be submitting all the payroll reports to the departments. This is a list of all the personnel that they have that they review. Uh, make sure that everybody's accounted for, all vacant positions are accounted for. And they review that and they submit that to us back to the Budget Department. We will also be conducting a, a citizen's, uh, budget survey. And I have a slide specifically on that as we, as we move forward in the, in the presentation. March, uh, in April, we have those payroll reports due from the departments. We will also have our fund summaries, uh, initial deadline from the department to finish all their ex, revenues and expenditures. May, we have city manager and department meetings to review proposed budget as well as CIP. One of the other items that we start back in, uh, we actually started earlier than that in, uh, January, uh, is meeting with the departments as it relates to CIP projects. So last year, uh, we started, we, the CIP has been in different departments. It's been in finance department, it's been in the budget department, it's been in the city manager's department. Uh, two years ago, it was delegated to the engineering department as, uh, a, that has been a best practice recommended by GFWA since engineering has a primary role on projects. So we have had, we are now having more of a team effort in our CIP, uh, budget. Finance, city manager's office and engineering are working together to update our CIP projects. And we're actually having to develop, uh, better strategies to do, uh, have a better representation of what's in the CIP. And that has really, uh, given us some dividends, uh, and we'll have something in reference to CIPs as, as we move forward in the presentation as well.
Thank you.
In May, we have, uh, performance measures training for the departments, which is part of a budget process as included in our, uh, budget book as well.
Mr. Sparza, one second, please. Go ahead. Okay.
Mr. Sparza, just regarding the CIP budget that's gonna be in July, are you doing a Plan A and a Plan B pending if the bond referendum passes? Because obviously the CIP discussion in August will be quite a bit different based on whether or not-
Most of our pro, most of our projects, and that's one of the things as we're meeting with the departments, there might be projects that come up. Everything that's in our CIP, or, or should I say, the items that are in the bond referendum are in our CIP currently as we have it. We've been updating the CIP. The, the CIP is a working process. As we, uh, find out that certain projects are no longer a priority, we change our priority levels. But all the items that are in the referendum are in the CIP.
Right. But it would significantly increase what we can do with the CIP if it passes in August. And if it fails, then there's, then it's a tougher, you know, challenge of, of, of the limits of, of how much we can do. So I'm just asking, is, is there-
Is there a contingency plan in case of-
Contingency plan, if it doesn't pass, because we'd have less bond capacity in August. So we would have to make much more difficult decisions in August if it didn't pass. Versus if it does pass, it opens up possibly some other projects that would not be included if-
We do have in, in, uh, uh, the presentations today, we'll, we are gonna be talking into that as to what happens if it doesn't pass. And I think Mr. Neb is gonna be covering some of that section as we move forward with the presentation.
Thank you.
But it, yeah, and, and council members, uh, the, the nature of this is that, you know, depending on what happens with the bond referendum, that will change our priorities of our general bonding that we have done on a regular basis. That, but if, if the bond referendum doesn't pass, then there are certain things that we can fit it within that, that structure. There are certain things that we can do. And so we'll talk a little bit about that as we move forward. But, but the, the quick, I think to the, the point of what the question is, is that, yes, what we, we will reprioritize essentially with the CIP depending on what happens with, with the, within the bond referendum.
Great. Thank you.
May I have a quick follow-up question?
Go ahead, Congresswoman. Yes, ma'am.
Um, thank you. It, so we will be talking about priorities today because I would like to know what those priorities are for the CIP.
Some, it is, it is, I, I, I would state that, um, that we're not, we may not get as deep into like, these are the, these are the top priorities within that. But we are going to do some strategic, uh, initiatives that, that the council needs to kind of weigh in that will alter how we build the budget. So I, I don't know if we're gonna get it exactly there. You'll let me know afterwards, I'm, I'm sure, as to whether or not we get that far on this conversation. But this is, um, I, I would state that getting into the priorities, that would be the next step. It's just gonna be based up on your vision at the beginning.
Sure.
And then we're going to interpret that vision within the, the budget. So if we don't get there today, we get there the next, the next conversation. It, it tempers our conversations with our departments.
Right. Absolutely. Thank you. Go ahead. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Where does the Viva Laredo compensation fall into all of this?
I, I've got a little bit of a conversation with that. I, I would, uh, I would argue to a certain point, uh, the, within the Viva Laredo compensation, uh, the, the Viva Laredo comprehensive plan, uh, it has a vision, an overall vision within the structure. And then it, of course, it has a series of projects that are, that are within there. We'll try to incorporate that, but I, I would, I would tell you that based upon the vision of the, the comprehensive plan, everything that we do meets back to that. We just not articulated it to that level. And so, uh, but it plays within that role. And, and so we'll, we'll talk a little bit about that because there is, there's, there's part of the, the vision and the spirit of the plan as well as those specifics that are listed in the plan. They do balance out and I, I believe that the city does a very good job of matching it. We just not articulated it as well as we could.
Mr., um, hold on a minute. May the record reflect, please, that the mayor is present and also Mayor Pro Temp, Vanessa Perez. And Councilmember Gilbert Gonzalez. I apologize. I didn't see you back there. All right. Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
To take advantage of the interactions, um, when you're showing the, the presentation on the screen, is this also being shown to the people at home? Cause I know for us, it's switching up a little bit. Is there a way to show them the presentation as well?
We are doing that. If, if you won't be able to show us, just from here, only the visuals that we're seeing here is how you're seeing it right now. But all of that is being shown.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. In June, uh, we'll, like I mentioned, we will be finalizing the fund summaries and that will take us to July. July will finalize the proposed budget that is gonna be coming to council, the submission of the budget and CIP to city council. We have a tentative date of July twenty-nine to meet our requirements. We publish in July also the, we publish the summary of the proposed budget and CIP notice to the public hearing in a local newspaper. Tendonate the dates that we have for that is July twenty-nine through August first. That moves it, moves us into August where we have our city council budget workshops. They're tentatively, uh, scheduled for August fifth through the seventh. We normally have them in that first week of August. As we move into September, there are some key dates in there. We have the public hearing and introduction of the ordinance. Uh, tentative date for that is September first. We have the notice of the tax rate on September eighth as a tentative date. And then we have the final reading of the ordinance to adopt and levy taxes on September fifteenth as a tentative date for that. As we finalize September, we create all the, uh, accounts for our new fiscal year. And on October first, we implement our adopted budget. This is basically, uh, the overview of the budget calendar. These days, uh, you know, change a little bit within those months to meet the deadlines that, that we have with the departments. Any, any questions on the calendar? Tell me.
All right. No questions? Proceed. Thank you.
Following, we have some budget loss rates. Uh, what we're trying to explain here, uh, to the public is the, the different type of fund types that the city of Laredo has. Uh, one, the main, uh, government type that we have is where the governmental fund type. This is where we have our general fund. We have our special revenue. We have our capital projects. We have our debt service funds, fund, and then we have our permanent funds. And I'm gonna elaborate on some of this as we go through the projections as to what falls under each category. We have proprietary funds. The proprietary funds are funds that focus on determination of operating income, changes in net position or cost recovery, financial position and cash flow. There are two types of proprietary funds, which are the enterprise and the internal service funds. From there, we move to debt service. Debt service is where we account for the expenditure of principal and interest payments. And this is for property taxes. And then we have capital project funds, which are mainly our account for expenditure of capital outlets, including acquisitions of constructions, capital facilities and assets. In this category, we mainly have all our bond issuances that we have. This takes us to the consolidated budget for the city of Laredo. This encompasses, eh, a consolidated budget is a summary of multiple budgets that are combining to one. It can be used to present an overview of an organization finances. And to the right, we have an example of the city of Laredo's, uh, consolidated budget, which is nine hundred and eighty-four million dollars. And this is for fiscal year, uh, twenty-four, twenty-five. And we'll go into the details of each one of those categories to the right, general fund, special revenue, so forth. One item that I did want to cover in today's meeting was that the, there is a total net operating budget. The consolidated fund financial statements may include inner fund bal, balances and activities within the primary government, which is that first type of, of, uh, fund type that we have. These amounts must be reduced to prevent duplication in government-wide financial statements. So as, as we talk about the total operating budget, which is nine hundred and eighty-four million, we have to take out less the operating transfers that we have. Transfers are transfers that are going from, for example, from general fund to health department to the police grants, the fire grants and all the departments that the, the general fund supports included in there is Max Mandel as well. So the total net operating for the city of Laredo, uh, is six hundred and ninety-seven million dollars when we exclude our intergovernmental transfers. Any, any questions on the net operating budget for the city of Laredo?
Go ahead.
Is this for all departments?
Yes.
So?
Our consolidated statement is we take all our individual, uh, statements that we have out there. We take airport, utilities, uh, Sims Arena, all the different funds are combining to this one main document, which is the total budget for the city of Laredo. So sometimes when we say we have nine hundred and eighty-four million as the, as an appropriation or a budget, it is all these different components that we have throughout the city, utilities, solid waste, bridge.
Right. I guess my question though is that you say less operating transfers. So you're transferring out to the health department, police and fire to cover ma, grant matches.
Correct.
Are you, is this, uh, operating transfers to the, all the departments across the board?
Correct. Yes. Every, there, there's departments that transfer within departments as well. Like, for example, we have bridge, we have the bridge operating fund. But we also have a debt service fund, a construction fund. So from that department, there's inner governmental, as we move monies into the specialized funds that we have.
Yes, go ahead.
Along the same lines, like, is there a standard way that all municipalities report this consolidated budget? Because a lot of times people will compare our budget to other cities' budgets in Texas or elsewhere, similar size. So, you know, just wanting to make sure that we're all, you know, we're reporting the same way.
Yes. We, we, we're following the GFWA guidelines to reporting. And that's one of the reasons when we submit our budget to the GFWA for the review, they're, they're looking at all that, that we have to meet certain standards of reporting.
Mayor and City Council, the, the one difference though, that you'll see within the consolidated budget is that not every city operates a bridge or a port system. Not every city has a water and a wastewater utility. So those are the differences that will occur within the budget. So you can't just look at the numbers themselves and try to compare against the numbers of, of what, how the city operates. Because a lot of things have been privatized in different areas. So when you look at it, you also have to look at the services that are being provided. General fund generally is our, our, our most, uh, normal fund, I guess, that everybody operates. Because almost everybody operates a police and fire department. They operate a, a park system, a street system. And so that's the general fund. So you have to, you have to look above than just the consolidated budget. Everybody reports it the same way, but you have to look at the pieces within it.
And just as another distinction is most cities don't run a health department either.
And that is correct. That's, that's another fund that, yeah, it would be divided differently from that. So.
May I have a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, so what, what efforts has the city made to present a zero-based budget to achieve a balanced budget?
Zero-based budget i, is a budgeting, uh, process where we start at zero and everything has to be justified. So we, we, we don't do a zero-based budgeting. And, and I'll go into the strategies that we've used before and the new strategies as we move forward with the, the, the new direction that we have. So I'll touch a little bit of, on that as, as I move forward.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
So as we look at the consolidated budget, which is, which represents all the different departments and fund within the city, we, like I mentioned, the nine hundred and eighty-four million appropriated, we have appropriated expenditures. General fund is two hundred and seventy-eight million. General fund is the one that we, that has to be a balanced budget of two hundred and seventy-eight revenues. We have to have, the, the expenses have to match. As we move down the list, we have special revenues, a hundred and forty-seven million. Debt service, which I mentioned, is where we pay our debt service payments, thirty-five million. We have our capital projects, thirty-one million. This is where we have our bonds. We have our enterprise funds, three hundred and ninety-three million. We have our, our internal service funds of ninety-five million. And then all the other are categorized under, we have a, a portion of five million. So as we look on the donut chart to the right, enterprise funds make forty percent of the consolidated budget. Uh, we have general fund makes twenty-eight percent. We have general fund makes twenty-eight percent of our consolidated budget, followed by special revenues at fourteen point nine percent. This is the, the allocation of the consolidated budget. This chart, I wanted to show this chart because this is a ten-year history of the different type of funds that we have. When we look at the consolidated, from left, we have fiscal year, we're looking at fiscal year sixteen to fiscal year twenty-five that we're currently in. Our budget back in fiscal year sixteen was five hundred and eighty-six, five hundred and eighty-eight million dollars. Moving to the future, we're at nine hundred and eighty-four million, which is a three hundred and ninety-five million dollar increase during this ten-year timeframe. This represents an average of forty-four million growth from fiscal year sixteen to fiscal year twenty-five at an average percentage increase of six percent. So looking at the last ten years, our budget has been growing at about six percent when we look at the consolidated budget, including all funds. Below that...
Yes, go ahead.
And thank you very much. I, I specifically asked for that information, and it means a lot. I think the public should, should understand, should see how we got here. It's that, I have a warning that I used, how did we get here? And how are we gonna, how can we justify such increases over the last ten years? Right now, that's, this is a general overview of it. I think we'll get into the, you know, the fine details as we move forward. But I think this, but this represents that, that those two little lines right there represent pretty much what, what I see. That is very important for the public to understand how we come together with, with bond issues and, and why we're gonna go into bond issues, and how it intersects with budgetary matters as we move forward in those increases. Because I know you, you can discuss right now, are the revenues catching up to, to the, the budget cycles? In other words, are we, are we in line? We're growing, are revenue growing? Our budget is growing because we're expanding. And I think in that detailed presentation that you're gonna have, that will explain the last ten years.
Yes.
And as we look, that, the top section talks about the consolidated, which is all the funds again. The, the, our primary fund that we have the most issue balancing is our general fund. General fund is also one of the funds that provide a lot of the, the services that the city of Laredo provides. Police, fire, public sa- uh, public safety, parks, public works, et cetera. So in, in, looking now at general fund alone, fiscal year sixteen, we were at a hundred and seventy-seven million dollars. Moving forward to fiscal year twenty-five, our current budget is two hundred and seventy-eight million dollars. So in the last ten years, we've grown a hundred and one million dollars in our, in our budget. This represents about an average of eleven million per year. And you can see in the, the different years, in seventeen, it was six million. Uh, we have years of fiscal year eighteen, eleven million, six million, seven, three, thirteen. And you're gonna see that in fiscal year twenty-five, we grew twenty-nine million dollars. And this was partially because of the growth that we've had in personnel. Uh, we've had two fire stations that are coming on board. So this equates to about, like I mentioned, eleven million increase per year, we average it out. And this averages, averages out to a five point two increase in our expenditures. Special revenues, special revenues.
Yes, go ahead. No questions, sir.
When, when you're averaging the percentages in the last column, and it says six percent, are you just, oh, the chart went away, but I have it here, okay.
Is the, is the average between fiscal year seventeen to fiscal year?
Well, you're, you're just adding the percentages together and divided by ten, I'm guessing. But it, it's actually a, you know, it's a sixty-seven percent increase over, total over the ten years. For the consolidated, a fifty-seven percent increase for the general fund. You're, you're just saying that, on average, that's how much it went up per year.
Correct, correct. I'm not getting the, the percentage increase from fiscal year sixteen to fiscal year twenty-five. I'm getting the average increase per year.
Mayor, I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Do you have a chart with the inflation rates for those years?
I don't have it with me, but I, 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 we do look at that and consider that for our budget process moving forward.
Can we have that too?
It's good.
Can we have that too?
Yes, definitely. The special revenues went from eighty-six million to a hundred and forty-seven million, increase of sixty-one million. It's an average of seven million per year, or nine point seven percent on average. We have our enterprise funds went from two hundred and thirty-six million in fiscal year sixteen to three hundred and ninety-three million in fiscal year twenty-five. Was an increase of a hundred and fifty-seven million and for the enterprise funds. And our internal service funds went from fifty-two million to ninety-five million, that's a forty-three point, forty-three million increase for those, from those ten years.
Mayor, question? Yes, go ahead. Mr. Sparsa, excuse the interruption. Going back to the general fund. With budget of a hundred and seventy-seven million in twenty sixteen, and we went up a hundred and one million dollars. And our revenues are our expenditures at that rate as well. So you have the, the percentage of increase of what we, we're receiving, but what about what we're spending? Have, does it increase at that rate, or is it higher?
No, we're, well, we're, we, we have to have a balanced budget. So whatever our expenses are, we have to have the revenues to match it, to accomplish our balanced budget. Part of the issue that we're having right now is that our revenues are not keeping with our expenditure growth. And I do have a slide...
Why is that? Where are we spending unnecessarily, and why can't we keep that up? Why are we not, are we not able to keep that up?
Not spending anything unnecessarily. We're spending it for specific purposes. And as we move forward, in, in, I have a slide that talks about the top three revenues and where those top three revenues are going to.
Okay.
And, you know...
We'll get to that in a few minutes.
Couple of slides.
Great, thank you.
And I mean, like I mentioned, I know that there was, there had been some questions on the ten years. That's why I wanted to make sure to cover them. And I wanna make sure that the, the citizens also see how we have grown. And we are one of the fastest, if not growing cities, and, and, and with that comes the issue of, of a growing budget. Even if we prioritize, we're gonna have that growth.
Mayor, may I?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, Mr. Sparsan, special revenue fund for fiscal year twenty-two, it's, it jumped significantly. Can we assume that those are the ARPA funds that the city receives?
Yes.
Twenty-two.
Thank you.
And in this slide, I'm gonna go into the different type of funds. Enterprise funds kinda give you a definition, and, and we have some picture depictions here of the departments themselves. So an enterprise fund is a proprietary fund, like we mentioned in a slide below, before. They are used to report activities for which a fee is charged and an external users for goods or services. So in our enterprise category, we break down now what is part of our enterprise. On our top of the list, we have bridge with a hundred and eight million dollars. We have utilities water at a hundred and eleven million. Utilities sewer eighty-one million. So those two departments are utilities. We just haven't broken down into the water and the sewer side of it. And because the a hundred and eleven million, you would add the eighty-one million, and that would be the total budget for the utilities department. So that's one of our biggest departments out there. Followed by solid waste at forty-nine million dollars. We have transit, which is a component, unit of the city at forty-one million dollars. And we have the municipal housing at three million dollars. To the right, we have the pie chart, and if we look at the bridge, bridge represents from the three hundred and ninety-three million that we have in the enterprise fund types, twenty-seven percent is bridge. Utilities water alone represents twenty-eight percent of the enterprise funds, and then the water, the, the sewer represents twenty percent. As we look into now the internal service funds, we have some pictures there of the internal service funds that we have as well. And the internal service funds are proprietary funds used to report activities that provide goods and services to other governmental departments, agencies or entities on a cost-reimbursals basis. These funds are designated to operate on a break-even basis over time, while short-term surpluses or deficits are not problematic. A significance of growing surpluses or deficits over time would undermine the fund cost recovery purposes. And this are the internal service funds that I mentioned earlier, and we'll, we'll look in this next slide. We see which, which departments those are. So we have fleet management, which, which budget is twenty-three million. We have the health and benefits budget for fifty-one million. We have risk at twelve million, and we have the information systems technology, AST, at eight million dollars. And in the pie chart to the right, health and benefits represents fifty-four percent of the ninety-four million dollars that we have in the internal service funds. Followed by fleet at twenty-four percent and risk at twelve point nine. So with, with these funds, as, as we do the budget for them, and I mentioned earlier in the budget calendar, we need to finance these funds because this expense trickles to those individual funds. And of course, in, in past years, we have been having some issue balancing because anything I increase here because of the fleet charges that are increasing. The health benefits have, have been increasing and, and are projected to continue to increase. These increases here are, are mainly passed to the departments, and one of those departments is the general fund department that we are trying to balance, so. Internal service funds. Then we have the special revenue funds that we have out there. Uh, those are the funds. It's a governmental fund type used to account for the proceeds of specific revenue sources that are restricted for a com- uh, committed to expenditures, committed expenditures for a specific purpose other than debt service or capital projects. An exclusive of resources held in a trust for individuals, private organizations or other government. So this is where, whenever we have special revenues, or for example, stormwater fees, which are under our NPS, the health department, it has fees that have to be spent on the health department or grants that have to be accounted. Those are all our special revenue funds. And in, in this slide, we show the, the special revenues that we have within the city. We have the sports and community venue, thirty-five million. Health department, thirty-five. And in, in this category right now, health, we have as well detox. Uh, we have the police grants, twenty million. Airport at nineteen million. Environmental services, ten million. We have community development, six million. Hotel, motel, six million. Conventions and visitor group are at four million. Parks, four million, and the special fire. The pie to the right of that, our health department is twenty-three percent of the a hundred and forty-seven million that we have in this category of special revenue funds. Followed by the police grants of thirteen and a half. And airport, twelve percent. And the sports and community venue at twenty-three, twenty-four percent of the a hundred and forty-seven million dollars that we have for special revenues. Then we get to the good one, general fund. General fund typically serves as the chief operating fund of the government. The main operating fund used to account for and report all financial resources, not accounted in any other fund. Currently, as we stand, we have nineteen departments in general fund out of the twenty-seven city departments. And following other different departments that we have, city manager, budget, municipal court, city attorney, city secretary, tax office, finance, human resources, planning, engineering, traffic, police, fire, public works, parks, library, internal audit, economic development, community development and marketing and communication, which was a, a new department that we added last year. As we get into the general fund numbers, we have two hundred and seventy-eight million dollars for general fund. And these are the revenues now, look, looking at the, the other side on, on the revenues, because we spoke about the appropriations in the expense side. We have property taxes, this, for this fiscal year at ninety-three million dollars. That's what's coming into general fund. We have sales tax that generates fifty-five million. We have the bridge transfer that's bringing in forty-four million dollars. We have charges for services at twenty-four. Other financing sources, we have twenty-three million. License imperments, ten million, and then we have the miscellaneous franchise fees, fines and the other taxes. The pie on the, the pie on the right shows that the property taxes bring in thirty-three percent, thirty-three point three percent of the two hundred and seventy-eight million dollars that general fund has to operate. Followed by sales tax at nineteen point nine. Bridge transfer accounts to fifteen point nine of the two hundred and seventy-eight million dollars that we have. And then we have the, the, the other smaller ones. But as you can see, these three are the main ones that are bringing in the most, the, the main revenue for general fund. As we look at the, now the general fund expenditures, two hundred and seventy-eight million, this is where the money is going to. Public safety, a hundred and sixty-seven million. General government, thirty-nine million. Culture recreation, twenty-six million. We have transfers that we talked about, the intergovernmental transfers that cover other departments or other funds, seventeen million. We have other financing uses at, at twelve million. Public works at twelve million. We have insurances of four million and health and wellness at one million. As we look at the pie chart, you can see that sixty percent of our money goes to public safety, police and fire. As we look at the next category, we have general government at fourteen point two. And then we have the other smaller amounts that go to the different departments, culture recreation, the transfer outs, other financial sources, public works, and the insurances that we have.
Mayor, may I?
Go ahead.
Um, when you're discussing public safety, now taking fifty-nine point nine percent of the entire general, or encompassing fifty-nine point nine percent of the general fund budget, that's a change. It, it seemed, well, just from what I had heard previously, that, that number was a little bit higher. The numbers were in the sixties. Do you see that is a trend? Is there an explanation?
One, one of the differences that we had is we had, uh, traffic was part of the public safety prior to in the last year's budget. Traffic has now been, is now part of the engineering department, so it's, we're no longer accounting for it in this category. That was a change that was done last year. But it's been about sixty, we, we've been about around the sixty percent range for the public safety.
Go ahead.
Do you have it broken down with the police and fire? No, like the...
I have it in another slide that's coming up.
And Mayor and City Council, one of the things about that, when you look at our comparable cities as well, too, anything within the sixty to sixty-five percent range is good for public safety within the general fund. Almost everybody kinda holds it within that realm. It seems to work, function very well for what, what everybody else is doing. So Laredo's no different. We're at, we're at essentially sixty percent.
We're very comparable, comparable to the, our comparable cities that we look at. Now, these are the general fund expenditures, and this is the fiscal year twenty-five. This is the numbers that we're currently working with. So this is by category. So out of our budget, as we spoke about the, the revenues that we received, two hundred, two hundred and one million dollars go to personnel. So as you can see in the pie, it's very evident that most of the general fund, because it's, it's personnel-intensive, goes into personnel. That is our biggest category, making up seventy-two point two percent of the general fund's budget. It is followed by contractual at thirteen point seven, and then the rest, materials, supplies, other charges and the intergovernmental transfers. That's why when we look at cutting general fund, it is, it becomes very difficult because if, if we wanna make a significant cut in general fund, it basically means we're gonna tap into our personnel. As we talk about personnel, and this is one of the slides that we have, the column, the, the slide here has a department name. It has the, the original budget that they have for each one of those departments. And it, then it shows me the personnel amount related to that correlated department, and then the percentage of their personnel is... amount related to that correlated department, and then the percentage of their personnel is to their original budget. So city attorneys, you know, they have a one point seven million dollar budget, one point five is personnel. We're at ninety, ninety-one point eighty-six percent is personnel cost. As we move down, we have fire, at current budget for fire, seventy-four point two million. Personnel is at sixty-eight point one, that is a ninety-one point seventy-seven pers- a percent is personnel. And we moved down the list, I have internal, internal audit, ninety percent, budget eighty-nine percent, finances eighty-eight percent. Police is at eighty-eight point twenty-seven percent of their budget is personnel. So personnel, like I mentioned, it, it's, and that's why when we look at cost of livings, longevity, contract increases have a, a direct impact into the, 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 the number of, of general fund when we balance it, when we try to balance it.
Is it safe, I'm sorry, is it safe to say that, that the percentage that ninety-one point eighty-six is city attorney and down the line? The remainder to get to a hundred percent is mostly operating, well, material is operating cost. Because you can see the disparity on, on, on some of these departments and know little how, you know, pretty small amounts to, to operate each individual office or department. It's very important to see that. Thanks.
And, and if we add, and I, and I'm gonna get into the strategies that we had before, the, 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 the monies that they have after we take care of, of contract, the personnel, departments have been asked to work within that, those allotted budgets because once we allocate the funding for the personnel, the, the, the money that's left over to cover materials and contractuals i- is pretty much depleted. One of the issues that I'm, that we're having lately because of the one inflationary cost and, and also, we also seem to have a, a big increase on our IT cost. Anything related to IT, which is now, most of the software that is out there is cloud-based. So we don't purchase a, a, a software and then we just pay a maintenance fee. Now we're having to pay a continuous annual service fee, and that has transitioned from a capital side to an operating expense side. So that has been a challenge and like I mentioned, on our internal service fund, we're trying to keep up with those changes in how those, those costs are coming in for them.
Mayor, can I, yeah, can, and, and can you elaborate a little bit more on how that affects? Well, I know how it affects you all, but departments within themselves, the, the operating cost, because of yeah, well, let's take, for instance, the police department, and how much of that cost is now going into maintaining those buildings? Does it tap into the, the extra, does it, does it make your budget go over because of maintenance and operating those buildings?
There's, there's two components to that, and I know we have it in, in one of our future slides that we have, Mr. Neb has it on, on his side. But there's the day-to-day maintenance of things that break, and there's the, the improvements that we need to make, replacing a big AC that falls under the capital side of it, which we can bond for it instead of having those monies impact our operations side.
Okay.
So if it's just a, a maintenance, it's things that break, you know, here and there, that's part of within their operating, it's already incorporated into our operating budget. Yes, go ahead.
Do you have a breakdown on, I see that you're wanting to emphasize personnel percentages on this slide, but do you have information on the difference, like what is being spent from the original budget compared, like for example, take, I don't know, human resources or city manager's office? You have the budget amount, and then you have the personnel amount, and then it's only seventy-nine, seventy percent. What's the other twenty percent going to? Do you have that breakdown?
I don't have it in this slide because I'm, I'm, I'm trying to have a high level amount of what we have. And, and the point that I'm trying to bring across here is that the, the main portion of the general fund's budget is personnel. So as we try to reduce, and, and I, I know there's big comments out there that there's a lot of fat in our budget, you know, or there are inefficiencies on how we're paying for some, spending this money, but the personnel is the biggest cost, you know, that we have, and that's my point in saying there that the materials and contractual is a smaller portion of that budget. We still look at it and make sure when, when we look at the department when they submit their budget, our worksheets have actuals. I can, we can see what they spent before.
No, I understand that. I understand what you're trying to show us, but what I'm saying is I won't see on the next slide any breakdown on what else is going into these departments. And for example, police, fire, when we approve grants or, or resources, vehicles, you know, supplies that they need, is that accounted for in the original budget?
Yes.
Okay, okay, we have a breakdown of what you're including from the original budget?
Yes.
And then what you're, because I don't see it in here.
It, it's not in the presentation, and if, if, for example, we have our, when we submit the, the book, and I think we have one of the books, which is our book, if you want to pick it up, John, sorry, could you say? Within that book, each of the funds, when we have in there, it has a break, a break, it's broken down by personnel, materials and supplies, contractuals, capital outlay, transfers, and other information, so.
Well, this is from twenty-twenty-four, will be in that book, or is this the projection?
No, this is, this is still, we're going over the current budget, so that is in that book.
Okay.
And I can provide you as, as, because even the book has a summary of that. We actually have worksheets that give you every single line item that we have, and we have the same thing, the two years' actuals.
How many pages would that be?
I would say about three hundred, three hundred and fifty pages.
You have it in electronic?
Yes, I can, yes, I can.
Can we have a copy of that?
Yes.
Yeah, and, and mayor Protim and city council, the idea of this meeting too is to stay on the revenue side as we kind of move into it. So all these numbers will kind of adjust, but happy to pull that information together for, for further conversations.
Mayor Protim, yeah?
Yes.
Mr. Farsa, reverting back to my question earlier. So let's take, for example, twenty eighteen, an increase, an increase of eleven million dollars, twenty-two, an increase of thirteen million dollars, twenty-three, an increase of twenty million dollars. You just mentioned that eighty-some percent of our general fund is for employees, correct? So you're telling me that we've increased employees or personnel by that amount of money, eighty percent of, let's just say, give an example, in twenty-three?
Seventy-two percent. The, the seventy-two percent is the, the percentage of personnel within our budget for each one of those.
Right, but we see the increase happening at an average of five point two percent per year. So is our personnel increasing by that amount? Not by the five-point percentage, but I'm talking about seventy-some percent of the twenty million dollars that you're saying in twenty-twenty-three.
Looking at the tenure history?
Yes. Because at, at this point, I see there should be a surplus at the end, and there is not.
Well, personnel is not the, the, we do have contractuals, materials in the other, in the other line items, and those have increased as well. So we do have a growth because this number here includes everything, not just personnel.
Right, but you mentioned the majority of.
Seventy-two percent of that is personnel.
Is personnel, right, so is that increasing at the same amount? That, that's what my question is. So if we're increasing by ten million dollars, are we increasing seven point two million dollars for employees? That's pretty much, I'm just talking around, figure out, of course.
And, and the revenues have been increasing, the only thing we have been using some of our reserves to meet those increases. And one of the strategies that we're using, that we're doing now is that we need to slow down the expense side to let the revenues catch up. And I do have a slide.
So at this point, we're surpassing what we're bringing in as far as general fund is concerned. And the increase says they're simply not enough to keep up with demand as far as our personnel. Thank you.
So this, this slide talks about the last year's budget process and, and, and previous budget years that we had. Normally, we have departments are instructed to implement a zero growth for all their controllable line items. Any additional requests were prioritized and submitted to management for review. The internal service funds were given more flexibility to address inflationary costs for medical insurance and, and, and technology. And this has been the, the past practice. We looked at all the expenditures, and then we identified the monies that we have to meet those expenditures. Most of the time, the expenditures are higher than what we generate with our main revenue line items. Our strategy moving forward in the directive, growth, control growth, number one. Align expenses with revenue growth. Departments are required to prioritize their expenditures to correspond with revenues. Manage the use of reserves and fund balance. Two, potential revenue increases. We have asked all our departments to look at all revenue ordinances to evaluate potential increases that account for inflationary, that can help us account for inflationary costs, while also considering the practice of similar other cities or comparable cities that we're looking at. Three, the fund balance. The general fund closing balance increasing to eighty days. We have a minimum requirement of fifteen percent in general fund as a fund balance. Last year, we were at close to twenty percent when we presented our budget. And we are striving to move, we're trying to get to twenty-two percent, but in long term, we're trying to reach twenty-five percent. And this is, if this is tied into the financial consultants recommendation that now more, most cities, comparable cities that we have are getting to that twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five percent fund balance. The fund balance is what the agencies, rating agencies look at. If there is something that happens, does the city have enough money to carry them through the fiscal year? And our fourth, fourth item that we have in here is our survey. We are conducting a budget survey to collect feedback from citizens as budget, as budget priorities from, from their input. So this is a new strategy moving forward as we prepare our budget process. The budget survey that I just mentioned, these are some of the questions that are put out, and this QR scan scope takes you directly to that survey. It is already online and working. We are working with our PIO office to also deploy this survey into the app, different apps that we have. We will have it in our main website and our, for the citizens to log in, but this is currently already working. If you scan the QR code, it takes you to the survey, and these are some of the questions that we have in there. We, for example, please rank following, the following city services in order of importance to you, and they have, they select from the selection. How satisfied are you with the following, how, how, sorry, how satisfied are you with the following city services? If you had a hundred dollars to allocate across the following areas, how would you distribute it?
Mr. Farsa, can I stop you?
Sure.
Where did we get these questions from?
Is this, is this questions that we work with management to put out and get some input from our citizens?
Yeah, mayor Protim, you know, these, these questions came from, we, we researched other cities in Texas that had actually put the surveys together. San Antonio and, and Austin predominantly are the ones, they either do a, every two-year survey, or they, they build it within their system. So these questions are actually based up on that research that we have done with other cities about trying to, trying to focus in on those best practices those other cities are doing.
Now, this was also a city that we looked at as well to come up with some of those questions.
May I? Mr. Neb, this is also being produced in Spanish?
Yes, ma'am.
I think we can move to the next one.
So these are the preliminary, the previous slide had been showing our numbers for twenty-five fiscal year, which is the current year that we're working at. These are some preliminary general fund revenues. The top three revenue accounts that the general fund has, which represents seventy-two percent, are current taxes, sales ta- tax, and the bridge transfer. So currently, we're projecting revenues of two hundred and eighty-seven point eight on the right square compared to our current budget of two hundred and seventy-eight million dollars in.
And can I, can I ask, where did you get the three point five? Like, is that based on? But is that based on growth of?
This is based.
Or what?
It's over, it's based on the growth that we've had on our, those three line items that we were talking about. So we're looking at current taxes and how that increase has increased in the last ten years. We're looking at the sales tax and bridge in the same manner.
So how much of, how mu- can you break this down further? Like, how much increase from sales tax? How much from bridge and how much from the current tax, including the two point five cap that we have plus the growth?
Yes.
Because that seems like a small increase when you factor all those things in.
I, I have those in the following slides.
You have it? Okay. Yeah, can we see it?
So the, the big takeaway from this slide is those, those three revenues generate, those three revenue accounts generate seventy-two percent of the two hundred and eighty-seven point eight million dollars. This, the, the general fund has two hundred and three revenue accounts. So we're very dependent on current taxes, sales tax, and that bridge transfer to be able to fund the, the expenditures for general fund. Property tax valuation, this is just a slide depicting on the left side, we have a tax, a total taxable value, and this is as to where our current taxes come from. We have about twenty-four billion dollars of assessed valuations. And on the right side, we have the breakdown of the debt service and general fund. This is the revenues that are generated from the property tax valuations. So in twenty-four, fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, in descending order, twenty-five, twenty-three, and twenty-two. In twenty-five, we had ninety-three million dollars come in from property taxes, current property taxes. Twenty-six million goes to debt service to pay our, our bonds. And then the ninety-three million is what comes into general fund to work with.
But, um, Mr. Farsa, that still doesn't show current, um, you know.
Property taxes?
Property, like the property taxes were from the current, and then the growth.
Hopefully, I'm two slides away to answer that question. General fund property tax revenue, to the left, we have our tax rate. The fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five tax rate is as point five zero, zero seven six two three for every one hundred dollar valuation. The amount of, of that portion that goes to debt service is the eleven cents, but it's eleven oh seven three five, which is the eleven cents that we talk about. And the MNO side, which generates those ninety-three million dollars is point three nine six eight eight eight. And then to the left of those, that number, we have the prior year tax rate that the city has had. So if we look at twenty-one, which is the first column on the left, we see that the tax rate was sixty, sixty-one, five, three, seventy, and it has gone down to fifty-seven, fifty-three, three, nine, four, five, and to where we're at right now at five oh seven, six, twenty-three. The chart on the right shows us the revenues that we're getting. So if we look at the second from the right, this is the twenty-four, the ninety-three, so it's, if, if we look to the left of that, we have eighty-five, eighty-one, seventy-three million, seventy-one, going back to twenty-twenty-one. And we're projecting a seven million dollar increase in property taxes with the preliminary numbers I mentioned. We'll be at about a hundred million dollars.
But I still don't see the breakdown on the growth side, the industrial side, the residential side.
Oh, no, 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 that's, okay, no, we won't have that. We don't have that inform, well, for the projections, we still don't have, you're talking about where the revenues come in on the, from the appraisal district.
Well, just not necessarily, I mean, or you could use the current data that we have right now just to show because people don't understand the, the two point five cap that we're working under. They think we're lowering the tax rate just because we want to lower the tax rate, and they're not understanding, you know, I mean, we need to get a clear picture that, that, that people's taxes are going up on their properties, two point five. The rest of it's coming from new growth or manufacturing or where, where, I think this needs to be broken down a little bit.
Mayor Protim and, and city council, within the big book, we do it every year, so that three point five, it does break out. How much of that percentage is coming from the, the property tax? How much is coming from bridge? That's the question that you're asking.
Yes.
We'll be able to show that. We, we have that information as well too, but it's not built into the presentation. That's, that's the challenge, I think, we have with that, but
Yeah, just to.
That is, that is one of the things that we do every year within the budget cycle is that we look at the, the growth rate of every one of those revenue sources. And then they combine and, and you'll, you'll, you'll recognize the questions that we're going to be asking because I don't see how we can grow a budget faster than the new revenue that comes in, and that's, that'll be the conversation that we're all gonna have.
Well, it's just nice to see a graph version because the big book is all numbers.
Yes, ma'am, yeah, no. Yeah, no, and, and we can, we can, we can get that information in, in that detail.
Have a question.
Thank you. So, going back to the general fund property tax revenue, the, the amount that's set aside for debt service, which is that darker blue? Is that, okay. So that number has been decreased.
Correct.
And is this, is that capturing, because this does get technical, is that capturing a, a healthy trend? Is that what we want to see? If we were to pass this bond, does, do we have an idea of how much that debt service would increase? And would we still remain within our historic, our historic rates?
The, the item on the, for the bond referendum, if I understand the, the question correctly, is any of the items, and, and that, that information is, is currently in, in the, our, our website. There's a section that we have for bond referendums and I can show you that section if you wish. When it takes you there, we have that ordinance that's going to pass and which is going to be in the ballot. Each one of those items has an impact on that rate that we're talking about for debt service. So, that is listed in there with what that increase in that tax rate is going to be. So when we, when we had the conversation, we had certain scenarios that we looked at, the five cents, six cents, and I think what we passed, or what council passed as an approved to move forward had a possibility of ten cents increase on the debt service side.
So, you would, would, would that be added as ten cents to that eleven cents?
Yes. Now, keep in mind that as you approve each section, it's on, it, it wouldn't happen all at the same time because we're projecting, we're looking at the next five years as the projects would be done. So, if year one, you have, you issue a bond and, you know, you need three cents to cover that portion of that, that's the only thing that it would increase. But one of the things, and, and that was a great observation that you have in there, we had been at almost a fourteen and a half rate in there. But past, uh, past action that, that, that we have done has reduced that amount on the debt service. So, normally, what we try to do is we want to try to maintain that debt service rate steady. And as we pay debt, we, we issue that debt to keep it in there. But we have had, we have been allowing that to be reduced. So this in turn makes the total tax rate decrease. So we have two components in there. We've had a, a declining increase on the debt service and a declining increase as the mayor Protim mentioned on the, the, the cap of the three and a half percent. So that's why we've gone from sixty-one cents to fifty cents. And what we're trying to do, or one of, one of the impacts that the referendum was to be is going to, is going to get us higher of those items were to be approved.
But I, I, I like the fact that you point out it's not all the next year. This is a five-year project, so it would be spread out in some way depending on what the needs are if, if the voters approve those specific bond projects.
And I, I know we have a little bit more discussion on that as we move forward on, on Mr. Neb's presentation as well.
Yes, Mayor Protim and City Council, please pay attention to the left side of the sheet here because that, from the twenty-one, twenty-two to where we're at, twenty-four, twenty-five, that's considered capacity that we currently have available to us as well too. I want, we'll talk a little bit more about that when we get to that, that item. But I wanted to make sure you understand that there is, there's capacity within our budget. It just has an impact on tax rates and everything as well too, so.
But I think, Mr. Neb, I think it would be helpful to see that slot, that graph have its own kind of, you know, focus.
It could be a good thing.
And it's important for the public to understand that, I think, in this process.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Next.
So now we're going to go into the, those three top revenues that the general fund has. We're looking at sales tax revenue here. We do have a history going back to twenty-one, moving to twenty-four, twenty-five, and also looking at the projection that we're coming up with for the new fiscal twenty-six year. So, we're projecting, the sales tax will be increasing from fifty-five to fifty-eight million dollars. And I mentioned this, our preliminary numbers based on what we're seeing out there. The next, the next slide are the bridge transfers. We are projecting, well, as you can see back in history, twenty-one to twenty-five, we were at thirty. Currently, twenty-four, twenty-five, we're at forty-four. And we are projecting an increase of an additional five million dollars coming into general fund.
Uh, Mayor Ma?
Yes.
Sorry, so, I know it is the big unknown and it's a national conversation, but do we have ideas of what an increase in tariffs will mean? How that will impact our bridge revenue? And not, not that we can ask your department to be very specific because it seems to be a moving target every single day. But do we have some kind of a, a plan B for some type of projections if some of these tariffs were actually to go into effect?
We've, we've been closely watching the issue of the tariff. At this point, it's really difficult to see where that's going to lead. So, the assumption that we're doing right now is because the tariffs are going to have an impact on the cost and those costs will be then pushed to the consumer. So it's hard to project, you know, what impact that's going to have at this stage of the game. So, we're starting our budget process, we're making an assumption, and we're looking at a history and a trend and not necessarily taking into account that at this point, as we move through the next two, three months before we come in for Senate budget, if any of that has an impact, we're going to have to adjust our budget to, to stay within those, those means or those revenues.
Do we have any ideas based on the last time? Because during the last Trump administration, some of the tariffs actually did take effect. So do we have any comparables?
Mayor, Mayor Protim and City Council, we have not done a full analysis on that though, but the, the parts, parts of the stuff that we looked at is that we also know that once with the threat of the tariffs coming in this last go-around, we saw a, a, a drop in the vehicles that were crossing at that time, the commercial vehicles. So we know that there, at least short-term, there's going to be an impact to it. But I would, the analysis that we have completed is that based upon where we're at now, if the tariffs were to go in place, and of course, in our trip in DC, one of the conversations that got said was about the, the mentality of the administration wanting to reshore or onshore, they're, they use both of those terms. And that's essentially bringing manufacturing back into the nation. That, that was the thought process. Just so you know, that, that is the most expensive proposition based upon the analysis that we have done is that a reshoring and bringing manufacturing back is still more expensive than even doing the tariffs to, to the level of what they were. We truly believe that anything that happens on the tariff side should be a short-term impact to us because as long as they keep the playing field for everything, everybody, then we're all good. The customs brokers, of course, they work in annual contracts. And that's, the, the big issue is that because they have these annual contracts of moving product back and forth, they have set fees of what they're charging. And the problem is that the tariffs, throwing the tariffs on next week will have an impact on all of those contracts. And that's the big issue that we have, that we think we're seeing on that. And so the, the whole process is to buy time to get there. And so the custom brokers, they, they have to eat that cost if it was to happen during the contractual period. Over time, it'll, everything will balance back out because as long as the playing field is equal. So, I would hate to see it done to our bridge, but nobody else is right. That's the concept. And so, but we, we truly believe, at least on the front side of that, some of the conversation we'll have today will help us develop out the prioritization of what's the most important to the least. I don't think we'll get there today, but the intent is based upon what that impact is to our revenue because as, as Mr. Espars is talking about, we live off of the current year revenue a lot. Now, we're complementing our entire budget with, with revenue that we've generated over the years. And that's, that's why we're able to carry the budget that we have. But our whole conversation will be is that we need to, we need to build our budget based upon the new revenue coming in. Any budget increases unless it's a bigger change because there is a cause and effect on each one of these things, which means we all have to drop certain programs in order to maintain the priority programs that we have, so.
I think that in terms of that question from Councilmember Cigarroa, it's important for us to, you know, start looking at the elasticity of this revenue a little more closely so that we can start to stabilize our income and other revenues. I know, one of the big criticisms from the public is that we're so heavily dependent on our bridge revenue for operating, which is understandable from our perspective. They have trouble understanding it from theirs. And why we can't, you know, afford certain things with, with this money. But, you know, I know in our three-eighty agreements, we've prioritized manufacturing, diversification, diversification in other areas. So I think we could use this year as a good exercise towards shifting our, the way we operate and so that the bridge revenue, you know, we're projecting growth, but, you know, if we're still at the same level from last year or whatever, we can still, we probably need to account for that five-million-dollar projected increase just so that we're not, because just in case it doesn't come, you know, or some whatever, but.
Yeah. And we'll, we'll have, we have some, actually some additional conversation on this as we move into the next part of the conversation, this, this meeting, so.
So we talked about the previous slides of revenues, where the money's coming from. On the expenditure side, we just had, I had this slide that just chose for public safety. We, public safety is a priority for the city. And this is, that's the one thing that we cover first from our revenues. So, on the left side, we have the operating, total operating for police. And this includes grants and annuities that we have to cover. Their budget is about ninety-five point nine. With the grants and annu, the, the grants that we match as well, their budget is about a hundred and one point six million. Fire's total budget is eighty point eight million. So we have about a hundred and eighty-two point four million for public safety, which includes transfers to cover any grants that we're, matches that we have for grants. When we look at the right side of the slide, we have the revenues that are coming in. So current taxes have a hundred million, sales tax fifty-eight point two million. So that's a hundred and fifty-eight million if we just look at those two line items versus the a hundred and eighty-two we're already short in there. So we then use some of the bridge transfer of forty-eight point six to cover the a hundred and eighty-two million. After public safety, the next thing we look at is health and wellness. And that's what we use the, the difference of the two oh six and the one oh two to cover. So ma, mainly, our, our main bulk of those two, three line items that we have goes into public safety to cover our public safety. Expenditures, we are currently working as a, on the payroll estimates, which is, like I mentioned in previous slides, one of our biggest expenses that we have for the departments. So the departments are still working on those expenditures. They're also, we're also working on finalizing all the internal service expenditures that we have in there. One of the ones that we are looking very closely is our medical and insurance rates. There are some projected increases that they're recommending. And we're, we're trying to minimize that cost to the internal service because those funds will be transferring to general fund and, and the other funds as well to cover. Fleet charges and IT, like I mentioned before, are also a struggle, but those are part of the internal service funds. And departments are working to prioritize their expenditures as directed within a maximum three and a half growth that we have out there. And we're trying to max, to control that growth. We cannot continue to have an eleven and a half percent growth like we did last year. So this year is, is a year of, of, of trying to control those growths and meeting those growths with the expend, the revenues that we have within those top two line items and, and minimize the use of, of, of bridge, which is needed to balance those, those, those public safety.
Can, um, well, that, that seems to be, you know, a, a, a good game plan for that. I'm just thinking that, that there's, there's more of a breakdown to, to prioritize three-point-five percent, meaning that you, you do, you do not want to risk your efficiencies and service for the sake of getting to that level. And all of that has to go through you all before you even, you process it and, and, and do that, right? So I just don't want, you know, I'm thinking out loud there that, just for the sake of saving it, don't, don't save it. But you don't, you don't want to, you don't want to ruin your, 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 you know, your, the work that you're doing right now just because you want to save money.
Correct. And, and it, it's, we're trying to match our revenues, not necessarily that we're trying to save. There is, there is, there is truth to that because we are trying to also increase our fund balance in our general fund. So that, that is a savings that we'll have in there. But that savings, most of the cities now are trying to get that savings for those unknowns, those, those things that come out that we're not really planning for a tariff that comes in. The economy is slowing now, our, our sales tax revenues decreased. We, the, the agencies out there, rating agencies are also looking to see that we have enough revenues there that we can finish out the year and then readjust and, and, and go over those, those, those times where, where something's happening.
Yeah, Mayor Protim and City Council, and, and the, the, those, the reserves that we will carry essentially, that also protects our bond ratings as well too. And that's what we're seeing when we're going out to the market every year for our bonds is that we want to maintain that high rating. And we're trying to keep up essentially with all the comparable cities as well too because they're carrying a little bit more as well too within the reserves. So the reserves protects us for the rainy day, but it also protects all our borrowing, our leveraging of our funds and everything. So, we do want to bounce it in there. I would argue to a certain point, that's just, that's just as important as what we're doing operationally side. I appreciate what you're saying, but.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
I think the challenge is that if we keep growing faster than our, our current, our new revenue comes in, we will eventually hit a wall. That's, that's the intent of the conversation. And we'll have to make harder decisions. And so, we're hoping to nudge it and try to, try to get there. But there'll be future, further conversation. I think you're, you're going to see the balance within there because, yeah, there's, there's another piece of this next conversation.
I guess I don't, I don't want our trend to be, I guess sarcastically, I just don't want to, you know, cut any heads without it being necessary and then learn later on that we shouldn't have done that.
And, and, and that's, the directive that we have to the departments when we met was to work within that three to four percent, three and a half as, as a goal. There's going to be some issues that we have in the departments that will need more than that. And by us setting this rate, that'll give us some leverage to adjust within those departments on the, the years as we move forward to adjust for things like that that need to be taken care of. In summary, we reviewed the budget calendar with the important upcoming dates. We, some of the dates that we have in there involve our, our dates that we want to make sure that council is aware. So, for the budget workshop, those filings, we covered the fund categories within the consolidated budget, the different funds that we have. We looked at the adopted budget by government type and where the money comes in and where the money is going to. We looked at the preliminary top three general fund revenue accounts, which is what generates the rev, most of the revenue that comes into general fund. Those three accounts out of those two-hundred-and-three accounts that we have. And, and I will be providing the, a, a listing of those revenue accounts, individual accounts for your, for your review. And then the new budget guidelines to manage growth, boost revenue, enhance fund balance, reduce reserve uses, and conduct a survey to engage the constituents. And that takes me to my last slide.
Thank you. Any questions from Mr. Espinoza? Thank you.
All right, Mayor Protim, City Council, we're going to shift gears just a little bit. And this is where I'm hoping to get a little bit of input. And I'll be preaching a little bit, but I, I think some of the inputs, inputs coming as well too. This next section, we've, we've titled council directives and strategic priorities discussion. So within here, we're going to talk a little bit about the financial policy and fiscal sustainability. I got them broken up into three different categories. I'll talk just very briefly about the compliance within the Viva Laredo Conference of Plan, proposed caps on budget growth, the allocation of fees and revenue to the general fund, some ongoing rate studies, and public health general fund shift within this section of, of this, this division of the next section. Really quickly, I do want to emphasize that all of our budget directives are grounded in the guiding principles of Viva Laredo Conference of Plan. Even if it doesn't tie directly to a project that is listed within there, they all support the livability, the economic opportunity, the sustainability, and the fiscal responsibility. So they all. economic opportunities, the sustainability and the fiscal responsibility, so they all, they all match up to that, even if they're not listed specifically in the plan. It's very simple to take the plan and identify a project or an activity and say this is tied directly to that. So the vision of this, uh, I think that's really the spirit of what that that Conference of Plan is, is very important within this conversation. Proposed caps on the budget growth, and so uh, you've heard that what we are recommending, of course, is to try to maintain our budget growth at what the revenue, new revenue coming in. Um, and this, at this point in time, we are, we we believe that three point five percent is a very conservative estimate as to what those, what that cost is going to be coming in there. Um, I think Mr. Espaza mentioned about, last year, we actually had an eleven point seven percent increase in our our general fund, that covered a lot of the changes that we were making in public safety as well as a lot of other things. I will tell you that when you walk through some of these pieces that I'm going to share with you, I'm not sure how to keep it in the three point five percent box, but at least we'll have the justification that we have to go beyond that. But I, that's the intent of this, so, uh, but I would always recommend that we have to build a budget based upon the new revenue coming in on that. Our current system of how we do the budget, because we, uh, we, it was mentioned about the zero-based budgeting, there is nobody out there that does, no city out there that does a strict zero-based budgeting, there, most everybody has it out there, whether it be a priority-based, whether it be a zero-based, it's a hybrid type of model. Laredo right now currently does what's called line item budgeting, and essentially, they look at each one of the lines, every director looks at each one of their lines in their budget and they determine whether or not it's going to go up or down based upon the conditions that they're aware of. What a zero-based budget does and what a priority-based budget does is it can, it makes you justify out the reasons why they're adjusting within a line, line item budget. The line item budget is the most, uh, the the simplest form of budgeting out there as you're walking through all of that process. Zero base is very intensive as to how to provide the justification, priority-based has its own little uh, system that you have to walk through there, but will, more than likely, Laredo, I would always recommend that we do a hybrid type of style. Uh, if you noticed in one of Mr. Espaza's slides, we asked all the directors to keep their uh, zero-based, all their, all their, everything they could control, keep it at zero. By the way, we did not do well with that, I I I would, I would argue or debate that saying that if it's at zero, then it's at zero, there's no work that has to be done, you can move anything around in there, but we increased everything based upon how the how, the jobs we were trying to do. Uh, so I I would just never put anybody into that, that predicament where I say it's zero, unless it is absolutely zero, we should, we should at least provide the ability for the conversation that occurs. Now, we we will get into, uh, as we talk and and you you alluded to some of that in our conversation, we are saying a three point five percent cap over, over the entire budget uh, with our expenditures coming in with our revenue. If we find our revenues are gonna go up, that's good, but we can, we can also go in there and go department cent- uh, specific, not just citywide, right, and say everybody's in the same box. But we have to start it at that model and it's so much easier to 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 direct everybody and say, we're going for three point five and then we're gonna have this justification analysis as to whether or not certain departments need to grow faster than others based upon the priorities. And some of that you'll, you'll help me with today. What this, I I threw this in there because I I think we have to do a better job of explaining exactly how we utilize the bridge revenues within our general fund as well too. Uh, and when you, when you talk to the industry within the bridge, and and this goes for all our different funds from different sources, when you talk to all of our industries that are, that are actually paying in, they want their funds to be paid to a certain service or a certain structure. I ended up doing a report for a reporter uh, on our conversation of uh, debating a port authority and how that would fit within our model. And you've heard the conversations with some of our port of entry uh, board members that have talked to you as well too at one of our council meetings. My, my information to this reporter was is that it's the impact of the bridges is why we move money into the general fund, because we have these bridges that are so active that we have all these eighteen-wheelers in every neighborhood out there, we have all this input, impact into it, we have all these people working in the industry that need services in order to provide for their families and everything. The general fund is synergistic with the bridge. And San Antonio, when they build their budget, they actually build off their, their, their funding source is their electric utility. They offset their general fund a lot with their electric utility, we just, we're just thankful and lucky we have the bridge. And I think uh, Mayor Protim's point of, we have to diversify, we have to find a way to diversify, uh, is very important within that because if the bridge was to drop, that is, those economics do damage to our budget. But I wanted to make sure, because I know the question always comes up, well, if we're going to charge for this, I would like to keep that money there and not support the general fund. Just note that our general fund, our police departments, fire departments cannot generate the cost of that service on their own, they're not allowed, I, I've tried to put quotas out there with the police department, they won't let me anymore, you know, uh, the, the nature of our public safety system. No, no, I wasn't, but no, yes, I am, yes, I am. No, those people deserved it. Um, but the, but the nature of it, and the point I'm I'm trying to make with that is that there, there is a, there is a nature to that service that we provide that everybody should have the expectation of how that service is done, regardless of where those funds have come from. The, but the nature of this thing is that we have to look at that, that division of those funds all the time within that, so really, I just wanted to make sure I had that conversation because uh, the most recent one was the bridge, but there are other funds out there that we, we help support different programs and everything else and uh, but I wanna make sure that you understand that we walked through that justification as to why, when we collect a dollar, you know, a portion of that dollar goes over and helps with our police department, it goes over, helps with our streets, it goes over and helps with our parks, with that, whatever's in the general fund. And I think if we justify that, I think that's the, the conversation that we'll start having on that.
Just to add to that comment, I mean, I think that in terms of a true, you know, sea-based port authority, it's easy, a little bit easier probably to kinda keep operations within that external port, it's a little, I think, a little harder since we're an inland port that we do have to account for the congestion and all these things.
I agree, yeah.
I can tell you that I'm working with the port of entry committee, I do think there is a need to um, invest in the port in terms of the congestion, the roads and things like that, and uh, improvements just to the bridge facilities, getting to the tech spa office, to the CDB office and all those types of things that, um, I think that's where maybe we can have some kind of hybrid model that some of the, maybe not necessarily the money that needs to go into the general fund to support the operations, but some of the reserves um, be used for improvements to the port, and I think that's kind of been missing in in the years.
And Mayor Protim, I I I agree completely with you on that, that strategy as well too, and and if you, if you remember what you heard from our port of entry board members that were here, they don't wanna change that structure necessarily, but they, they wanna justify it out in in a different manner as well too. And and I truly believe, and and you're gonna see this, I don't know which item I have on here, but um, exactly the issue of what you're talking about, we are not reinvesting in our properties the way we are supposed to. And we have to invest in our properties, we have to take care of that, that foundational piece first, uh, within that structure.
And Mr. Neb, also, I think it's important for council to know that, um, you know, we know how to cover a deficit, cause we pull it out of reserves, but what do we do when we have a surplus? And I think the surplus doesn't really come to us, we never get presented, oh, we had a surplus, how do you want us to spend it, how do you want us to allocate it? The surplus monies basically is up to the department to decide or half and half, I don't know, but I think it's a conversation we should have in this budget is, how do we wanna handle surpluses?
Yeah, and and Mayor Protim, and yeah, and let me address that really quickly here before we go on as well too, cause I, I don't believe that the departments have the ability to just spend, they have to work within the budget that's been adopted by the city. Now, what happens when we bring in a new grant is that we essentially amend that budget at that time to incorporate that money in there. But I agree with you, I think we can do that very easily, that if we do have a surplus, that money usually just goes into our checking account and, or in our savings account, I guess, and then we bring it out and we utilize it to help prop up the next year's budget usually. But uh, there has been times that we, we, we've received that additional money that we would go and do a budget adjustment to place in there, so I, I, I think we can incorporate that, 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 that request very simply within that as we look at our, at our revenues and our expenses, saying, hey, just so you know, we have this much money extra for that. Um, I think that's something that we have to watch for within our entire budget size cycle because uh, there is almost to a point, there's a use it or lose it for every one of our departments, so there's really no effort to salvage and say, I can do it cheaper over here instead of this way, that's what we thought we could do cheaper, because that money will be swept back into the, our, our savings or checking account and then we'll put it back out again. There is, there is a process that goes through that, and so I appreciate what you're saying.
Thank you. Um, well, when we're talking about savings, if if they were to come our way, we just spoke about the reserve needing to be increased. Would any type of savings plan also include, incorporate that? So I mean, maybe we get to this increased in, increases in reserves a little bit more quickly, especially if it's going to improve, improve our bond rating.
Yeah, and yeah, and thank you for that, because, yeah, the intent is to get there. And so we're talking, we're talking on the broadest level with all of you right now to kinda get your guidance, get your, get some of your vision within there. Um, we went through and and I don't know if you remember, when I first got here, our, our reserves were essentially at about seventeen percent. We're, we're now a little, we're up closer to that twenty percent because they, budget and finance did just that, we tried to bump it up quicker to try to get at that window. And what we find is that, we find that everybody is within that twenty to twenty-five percent level and that's where we wanna be. Um, from these conversations, based upon your input, we will put together the plan, I mean, it, you know, the, it, it's less expensive the longer farther out we go, but then we're taking a chance on, it's, we're taking a chance on it not working. So the idea is that if we can get it done within one year or three years or five years, then we can, we can eat that, I, I, I use the eat the elephant scenario quite a bit, we can eat it slower and then that has a less of an impact on anything that we're doing within our, our structure as well too, but yes, we can, we'll, we, we will definitely be putting that conversation into play, it'll be coming back to you and saying, all right, here's our budget, here's how quickly we wanna do our reserves, here's how quickly we wanna, we wanna, we wanna move everything within this.
Mr. Neb, I'm gonna stop you, uh, Councilmember Sierra has a comment.
I just have, I have a quick um, question, comment slash, um, so I keep hearing a lot of, and I, yes, I understand that at the end of the day, that we as a council make a, make, you know, make the um, the, the different decisions, but at the same time, like you are our CEO and you're, you should be, I, in my opinion, I believe that you should be coming to council with a, a strategic plan and a list of priorities, rather than saying, oh, well, it's up to you all to decide how we're gonna spend that bond or um, when we're gonna do X project versus this one, and what can wait a couple of years, where do we wanna be in five years and how are we gonna get there? Like I, I, I don't see those questions being answered or any of that being presented.
Thank you, and 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 Mayor Protim and City Council, the intent is to get to that level, the, the nature of this thing, but it has to start with the vision of the council. It, yes, we're, we're all the professionals, I mean, I lean on my people every day in order to say, how can we do that service better, or what do we do with that? It, I, it is my recommendation, let's not build a budget that is over the revenue that we have, that we're generating and coming in, because I, I believe that that hamstrings us from any of the other priorities that we wanna get to. Uh, we talked just a little bit about the bond referendum just on, in the earlier conversation, that all of those items are on the CIP, they, they're, they're out there on the CIP, uh, I would argue that the Hamilton Hotel was one that was just recently added because it wasn't our issue until within the last year. So we will provide that, that, that guidance within there and it's coming, it is coming for that, but I, I think, I just wanna make sure you understand that it has to meet what the, the, the overall vision is, I think that's why the Viva Laredo compet- uh, the, the plan is very important for that, that's why all those pieces are there, but uh, we will present that information forward in that format and then you have to determine if, if our justification, my justification or the team's justification makes sense within what you need to get done.
And, thank, thank you, thank you for that. Um, so I guess, if I may just add a tag, tag on another question too, so I just, I also, and I, I apologize, cause I do wanna get through the presentation before totally.
No problem, yeah.
Digressing, um, or digressing, but I also keep hearing a lot of like, well, we're struggling to meet a balanced budget every year and we're being creative about it. And so in thinking about and um, just like, what, what would happen and how would we meet a balanced budget if we do, if the, the bond is approved and those, that's a, that's a really important detail, as to how we would meet those amino costs.
Yeah, and and I, I think, hopefully, hopefully you heard a little bit in Mr. Espaza's whole uh, presentation piece of this thing, we are required every year to have a balanced budget. The problem is that, and I think uh, Councilmember Gutierrez actually alludes to it as well too, we are, we are taking reserve money in order to help complement our budget, that's, that's the challenge. By the way, we have the funds in order to spend, I am not one of those individuals that believes that we should ever tax and not have justification why those dollars are, are there, you, you should, just should never do that, we should just reduce the tax rate as well too. But I would tell you that we have conflicting, um, not, not directives as such, but a conflicting vision, I talked just a little briefly about the capacity of where our, our tax rate has been lowering, that is also the thing, we've, we've been, we've said, we don't wanna, we don't want to, and we don't wanna maintain that tax rate where it's at, we want it lower. And that's been the, the marching order, so it's really difficult to lower the tax rate, keep all the projects and keep all the, all the work that we're doing and then, and then think we can live within the, the dollars are there, the, the, the economics of our, of our property tax is not such that we can maintain that flow. Uh, and there, there, there's another part of this thing at the, toward the end, I'll talk about the efficiency studies that, that you have all asked for within your own way in February as to how we're gonna tackle those, uh, review all of our departments and try to eliminate the programs that don't really fit anymore. And, but I think that's the nature of what we have, is that we have a balanced budget because we're required to have a balanced budget, we, but we, because we have, we have not spent in the past, and I would argue that that's the reason why we have to go after bond referendum for some of the work that we have, we've loved our stuff to death and we've never reinvested to take care of it and that's why we're out there asking, saying, we've gotta do things differently than we've done before. And uh, but I, that's where I'm, you can kinda look back, hindsight being twenty twenty, right, hindsight being twenty twenty, you can look back and say, man, if they would've taken care of this then, then we wouldn't be taking care of it today.
Right.
They took care of the things that they had to take care of, I'm, I'm not arguing that point, but I do believe that hindsight being twenty twenty, because we weren't reinvesting in the buildings the way we were, we love them to death and it doesn't matter whether it be Bruny Plaza, whether it be the, the federal courthouse that we picked up, whether it be the Conseco House, whether it be the uh, the old city hall where the arts center is now, whether it be every, uh, the police station, we loved our properties to death and we'd never put money back into it to maintain them. That's one of the biggest things that you're gonna see in one of my slides, I've gotta incorporate building maintenance into everybody's budget, which scares me about the three point five percent cap when I'm trying to add something that, all they've done is they scraped the money from salary savings or they scraped the money from somewhere else, I'm telling everybody, no, make this a priority, because what hurts is that we have buildings out there that are, we love them to death for, I'm not gonna say it any, any other way, we love them to death and then we wonder why we have to go and borrow money on a bond issue to go out there and replace all the big expensive stuffs.
Can I, can I?
Councilmember.
Okay, uh, I'm sorry, um, which is, just brought to mind, Einstein once said, um, in order for you to solve a problem, you must, you must remove the behavior with, within which you got there. And by, by just saying what you just said, I, I think that, that was the problem, you identified the problem, you don't wanna uh, continue to repeat it to do that. Um, and and going through this, I'm, I'm wondering also, because we're gonna be, like you said, the three point five does, yeah, it scares me too, you know, because uh, but I'm wondering if, if we're gonna be looking, which by the way, this is, this, this other document is very well done, uh, because it's gonna tap into what I'm about to say, uh, that we, I'm not sure if in the past or, or now you're considering the idea of process reengineering on a departmental level, uh, and 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 try to get some, some more efficiency out of it because of that, and and thus saving us a little bit more money in, in going for that.
And, and, yeah, Mayor Protim and Councilmember, to that point, yes, that, that is part of what it is, and I will tell you that every one of your department heads have done a great job of that anyway. When we introduce technology, we try to ship those resources to something else, I think the thing is. the thing is that we've never looked holistically at the entire department and said, this is, this is what we're trying to do. And I've had a couple of conversations here recently about, uh, holding your standards higher and building departments, one of the predominant departments that we say, what we've done is we've lowered our standards to the amount of resources we've devoted to this, to the service. And I said, no, you got to keep your standards up here. Now you got to tell me and I, I got to be able to tell every one of you, this is how we're going to keep those standards there. And that's, I think that's where our system is broken down within our whole budget cycle. We're not having the right conversations within that structure. And that hopefully you can see that, that this, this budget workshop is the start of that new structure as well too.
I have Councilmember Sierra.
Thank you. And, and I guess maybe just one, um, one really great example that we witnessed recently was our utilities department. We have a consultant that, that has come in and, but, and you, probably without even asking, he looked at the numbers of the department and actually saved us at like, I've, uh, over four plus years that I've, I've, um, been here, I've never once heard any kind of cost savings at the way that it was presented in that manner. And so it's clearly possible that there are ways that we, and savings that we could, um, address and, and probably redirect them in a more efficient manner, um, such as some of the needs that.
I, I appreciate that well too. And I, I think an analogy that works here, give me forty acres and we'll get that eighteen wheeler turned around. I mean, it's a, it, it just takes a little bit of time and it takes the right questions to be asked and to take the scenarios that are there. And hopefully you can kind of see some of that as well too, because I agree with you. That's the things that we're starting to, we're, we're growing up, for lack of a better way.
Mr. Neves, I think that what to, what to the councilmembers' points is that, um, it's kind of like what Dr. Haruna was talking about in, in the class that we all, a lot of us took, that, um, you know, we shouldn't necessarily start from a position that everything we're currently funding today is automatically going to be funded next year. I think we would like to see where we could possibly shift some of these longstanding focuses that are variable that maybe we don't need to go in that direction. We could allocate those fundings for a different directive. I, I, we never see that in the budget. We always get, this is what we're spending and this is how much we need to current, to spend there and this is how much that's left and it's barely anything. And we don't get to allocate it to anything or have these prioritization conversations because we're barely breaking even and we're left with like a million dollars and we have to decide between, you know, an animal surgery hospital and like twenty million dollars worth of wants. And it's just not enough money. So, um, I do think that it might not be, um, the time to just completely scrap everything and start from scratch, but I think some flexibility in the budgeting is probably what we're looking for.
Yeah, and let, let me address that too, Mayor Potem and City Council, because, uh, we, we spent a lot of time discussing this as well too. The challenge we have is that we have to have a budget done by October first. And so then we, then you back it up. And then we have to have all those different kinds of conversations. What I would argue is quit, put yourself, and I've tried this, I've tried this the last couple of years. I, sometimes I'm successful, sometimes I'm not. If, if we can get these things to you and have you debate it within the structure of the meetings that system that we have, don't worry about the happening at that time of that budget. When it, when that, when that issue comes to your table, then we walk through that item and for that, regardless of when it is. We can trigger it at the next year's budget or we can trigger a budget amendment and fix it right then and there. We can adjust that. I, I think that, um, I never like to spend money that we think we're going to get until after we've gotten that money. I, we shouldn't, we shouldn't say, well, the check's coming next, it's in the mail, it's going to get here by the next Tuesday. Let's go ahead and spend it on whatever the project is. I'd rather put that money aside and that, but the nature of what I'm trying to say as well too is that try, let's try not to do all of this renovation, this realignment and everything within just one budget cycle. It's very difficult to get it done because one, you don't have enough time to get it done. We don't have enough time. And I think that's why we, we, I think over the years, Laredo has thrown himself into this other box that they don't have those conversations. They need to happen as they're going and, and you can see some of those adjustments out of police and fire. You can see some of those adjustments out of some of our other departments as well too, that we're trying to tackle this thing a little bit differently than we have. And so it's, it is working, but it is time consuming of its own right to a certain level to get that done. But if you think you can get, we definitely can't take forty-two different departments and divisions and be done with it in time to prove a budget in October when it may affect the priorities of what you think need to be the focus. And I think those are the things that we have to kind of balance out. That's why in my mind, I don't think we're going to get exactly what I'm telling you I want to get in the budget for this year. But I'm, but I think next year I might get a little bit closer and then maybe the next year I'm, I'm all solid on that because it takes a little time to build that, that thing. Let me walk through a couple of other of these pieces if it's okay. We do have two ongoing rate studies right now. We are doing the bridge system rate study, uh, and we are touching on all of those points that you, that was brought up a little bit earl- earlier. We want to look at the justification. We want to look at if we raise that, it's a fifty, essentially a fifty fifty for every dollar we raise there, fifty percent goes to the general fund, fifty percent stays with the, the bridge. I want to make sure that we've looked at all of that to make sure that it balances out so that if we do, if we do adjust our rates, they are adjusted upon what our needs are as a city and as a bridge system. The utilities rate study is also out there right now and we are looking at those, uh, the water and wastewater rates, not the solid waste yet, but we, we should probably look at the solid waste rates, but the water and wastewater rates are being looked at as well too, to make sure that we have the, the funds in order to do all the work that we are doing. You did go through in the last couple of years where we changed from the regular cost of living adjustment about three percent. We went up to five percent for a couple of years there because our, our costs were growing faster than what they were. And I think this alludes back to what Councilmember Segaro is saying about, you know, we're now looking at reductions of saying, these projects don't matter within our system of utilities. And so that'll all impact our rate study. Uh, but we want to, we want to make sure that those rates, rate studies are out there. This follows along with, and I know the mayor has talked about this a couple of times, the public health general fund shift. Uh, we want to share the intent to continue shifting the public health department's budget from grant funding only to general fund expenses. There are, there is, there should be a, uh, and this will be the longer conversation on public health is that we should have the core model of our public health department that says, this is what we're going to run regardless of any grants of any, any system within there. The grant programs that we have, they're all good and they all help, uh, a class of our public. They, they all help something within that structure, but once the grant is gone, we don't know whether or not we can absorb it. That's the challenge that we, you guys have had over the years with that. We want to continue shifting that public health general fund and we want to kind of increase that. One of the items on here, I'll talk about building maintenance as well too, trying to build that into the budget. I think that will get us, uh, my request for budget and public health is to try to find another two percent to move public health two percent higher into general fund rather than, rather than on the, uh, just the, the grant system that we have. Um, and of course, we are asking for the estimates and the financial impact and long-term planning because I think there are some core services our health department does that, that should main, that should be, they're unless, unless, uh, something gets cured, right? It should always be out there. Uh, but there are also all these other, other ones that are really nice because they've been, they've been, um, important to the federal government or the state government say, let's do something about this, this issue. And so I, I wanted to make sure that, uh, you know that one of my recommendations for public health is to try to meet that, met, at expectation. At least the mayor's been the most vocal about it. I think all of you have actually agreed that we can't, we can't live on grants alone. We need to, we need to actually make sure if this is important to our community, let's make sure we're covering that cost.
Mayor Potem.
Yes, Councilmember King.
Thank you. And, um, yeah, hearing that actually worries me quite a bit, you know, because like I, like I mentioned earlier, we're one of the only cities in Texas that has a health department. Because generally speaking, there are county health departments that, and for whatever reason, historically, that's just the way we evolved as a community.
Yep.
Um, but there's also some tools that, you know, counties have that cities don't, like we talked about with hospital districts and whatnot. And of course, I know right now the county seems to be not in favor of pursuing that, but, um, I just, makes me nervous to think we're going to be taking more, I mean, I, and I understand the mayor's, and he's not here, but I, I know that's his preference. Um, but, uh, you know, just it, it worries me a little bit, um, to think about, um, adding, taking more from the general fund, um, than we already do just because, I mean, we already talked about how tight our general fund is as it is. So I'm just wondering if down the road, there's ways we can talk about collaborating. Um, the, the more entities that are involved in any issue, but particularly public health in my opinion, um, the more entities we can, the more public entities that we can get involved in this, because we all have a stake in this. Not, it's not just, um, you know, a city, it should, I, I don't believe it should be a city, exclusively a city issue, but as, if I'm in the minority, that's, that's fine. I just need to state my, my position on that.
And Councilmember, I, I agree with you. I agree with, with your position.
Uh, Councilmember King, do you want to make a motion to direct staff to do something like that? Make an arrangement or do you want to wait until another time?
Well, I mean, uh, sure, happy to make a motion to these.
Start conversations with our partners, uh, whether it be county or other or state, uh, options or, um, just to have a more coordinated effort to kind of share. And I know we did this with the detox center. The county, uh, did renovate, um, the, the facility. Um, that was a one-time expense though. And then now we are in the situation when the ARPA funds go down, um, uh, when they run out for the detox center.
Councilmember King, let me get a second.
So second to start, second to, to start the conversation.
So, uh, I think it's important, Mr. Neves, since we do have a close relationship with the county. I mean, we've been working closer with them over the years. And, um, if this is something that the city's absorbing, we could provide better services if we would collaborate in that way as well. If there's a way that we can have that conversation. As per Councilmember King's, uh, motion, I think it's important.
And Mayor Potem, and I, I, I concur completely with that, that conversation. We have to have that conversation. The, the counties are tasked with the, 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 the health, county health departments and, and such like that. I'm assuming that way back when, whenever it happened, the county wasn't interested in doing that because they, they are not required to do it. It is they, uh, they're the ones that are built to do it. And then Laredo decided to take it in on itself. This goes into the efficiency conversation as well too. I, I think when I, when I talk about this is that we, if we're going to meet the expectations within the budget, I, I need to keep moving with it, with the directives that I'm provided. I'm, I have no problem with having those conversations with the county saying, there's got to be a better model with all of us participating together rather than just it all being on that. Uh, I would also say that Laredo is predominantly the population center for Webb County as well too, so.
I'll take a vote on that motion. Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. All right. And just, just so you know, and, and that doesn't mean that we stay that way, but if we're going to, if we're going to go away from a grant system, we need to, we need to have that conversation. Uh, compensation and staffing, like you, like you just heard with Mr. Sparza, we are, uh, we will have, we'll be recommending salary adjustments within this budget for all, all the positions. Uh, we are going through a leadership position salary adjustment. We are looking at employee benefits, cost possession and enhancements. And then just really quickly, I'm going to mention about the collective bargaining agreement. We have the police department this year. And really quickly with the, uh, the salary adjustments, um, unless somebody says that we shouldn't be doing this way, this is our classification compensation plan. And within that plan, we look at our salaries for two different ways. One's a cost of living adjustment. The other one is a merit-based or, um, salary adjustment. It's a movement on the scale. We have a minimum, maximum salary level and there, we should be able to move people across that scale. Uh, but we also have inflation, which is also the cost of living adjustment. So when we look at our, our salary adjustments, we are going to be looking at both of those, those systems within that structure. Uh, depending on, depending on how we can fit it within the budget, I would argue that, um, every budget that I, I have built over the years, you have to, and again, you saw it as being seventy, eighty percent of our budget. We rely heavily upon our people, taking care of our people or they're our number one asset. All the other stuff kind of comes, uh, separate with that. So I want to make sure, and this is the whole idea about the classification compensation plan, is to eliminate the uncertainties that our people aren't taking care of to that level. And so, uh, I left, I left the numbers off there because we are looking at the cost of living adjustment. We are looking at how to move people on the scale. I just wanted to make sure I laid it out to all of you that, um, we are going to follow our classification compensation policy that was presented to you and it'll be coming forward in, in a manner that we can kind of fit. Right now, I believe that, uh, we, we are seeing, uh, the tentative of about two point five percent for sure, uh, based upon the inflation and, and essentially what the social security cost of living adjustment is. So we are, we are working on those numbers right now. You just approved the, uh, the Siegel study for all of our directors and above positions. They, so we now have a fully updated scale, grade and step scale for all positions within the city. Um, and so just know that within this budget, we will be taking care of those directors and above positions. We'll be balancing those out because we have moved some from one grade to another. And so depending on what that, what that is, what that position is.
So do we have a copy of that Siegel study? Can we have it?
You, uh, we get you a copy of the study, yes. Yep, and we get you a copy of the study, but just know the study actually sets everybody on the scale. It doesn't set them, it's, it puts, places them on the grade. It does not move them on the, on the grade from step to, from the minimum to the maximum. That'll be the next piece.
The study, what do you, where would you base it? Where, how do we base ourselves from that study? So that's something that, you know, for me, it's okay. Then, and the reason, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm shit.
Yeah.
The reason I'm asking is because we got people for, that have been there for many years, you know, and then you have people that are get hired. And then that study puts those people to the same level for the people that have been there for many years. So I want to know wha, how and why.
Yeah. And, and a lot of that is, is also internal equity within the structure. So just, I'll, I'll explain those terms as we get into this deeper, but there is an internal equity. This is what you ran into with the first Siegel study as well too, because we bumped people for being in, in the, the city longer. Um, and, and that, that offset then when we bring in individuals for different departments as well too. We're, we're, we're challenged with engineers. We're challenged with the utility director right now that is actually, uh, hitting up against those internal equity questions as well too. Um, but when we built the schedule, when we built the scale, it is based upon the compensatory or the, the comparables of all the other cities around, the industries around us for what it, what it is. We don't look at oil and gas though, because oil and gas is a, it's a feast or famine kind of system as well too. So we can never keep up with those kind of things. So we do these people within that, but I'll, we'll, we'll explain all of that to you at a, at a, at an updated version. Employee benefit cost projections, we are, we are looking right now, I've heard anything from, uh, right around the ten point six, ten point eight percent increase on our benefits just because of the insurance market. Uh, we are looking at some of the potential of, of changes within that, uh, right now. And just so you're aware, uh, I think if you, if you saw in the news, is a Zepbound now is capable for doing sleep apnea. And so it is, it, and so we're checking with Blue Cross Blue Shield as to whether or not that is a, that can now be in there. Because when we were looking at it for obesity, all those, those, uh, medicines for obesity, it, our, our insurance couldn't cover it. We would have to compensate for that, that differential within that structure. What we'll do is that as we walk through these systems and within the, the employee benefit, we will look at whether or not we can actually add it in and increase our value within the employee benefit, or if we have to come and ask you, let's drop off some of the, the stuff that's not being utilized and, and cover, cover the insurance on the things that are more important to us. So those conversations will be coming within this item. Again, I'm, I'm not going to talk specific numbers with you right now, but just know that those conversations are out there.
Yes.
Yes, and also we, we did add, um, bariatric surgery this past, during the budget this past August, which went into effect for fiscal year, um, you know, twenty-four, twenty-five, but actually didn't really go into effect until January first of this year, which, um, and so I'll be interested to see what the cost, I mean, we're not going to have a lot of data because it's only been
Right.
two, three, almost three months. Um, but that'll be interesting to see the cost of that. Um, and of course, the long-term.
Right.
Savings and impact. And then the medicines you mentioned, you know, for obesity, I, they're, they are very expensive right now. Um, but like you said, there are new indications that we could use to maybe not use it on quite so many patients. So you mentioned sleep apnea. There's also just history of cardiovascular risk that has special indications. So there's maybe ways we could implement it slowly with very specialized, you know.
I, I just don't want you to feel like we're avoiding the conversation. We want to make sure that we have the conversation and also know that our, our current insurance process is that We want to make sure that we have the conversation and also know that our, our current insurance process is that the employees pay in as well as the city. So there's a balancing of that as well too. So just be aware that we're walking through those conversations. But I, yeah, I, I think the idea is that we, again, and this has been a conversation I've had in the last couple of weeks as well too. We can't leave everything the way it is. We need to, we need to, we need to catch up with what, where the world is at as well too. And so that's the process that we're walking through. Really quickly, this conversation's coming. I'm not going to talk about any of the strategy or anything else. But we will be asking to go, uh, have a conversation in the back room. Uh, we already have our strategy laid out, at least internally. I want to talk with the council to make sure our strategy matches what you believe we should, how we should walk through the conversation. I think that's one of the breakdowns that we might have had in the past. Uh, again, um, we're going to be working with the police department on their, their financials as well as their non-financial pieces within the CBA. So that conversation is coming. I believe that those, uh, negotiations actually start in April, toward the end of April. Uh, we are hoping that based upon our pre-preparation conversations with you and everything. We'll actually move it a lot better than, than I think the last CBA that we've done. So, uh, we're, we're, we're getting ready for that one. Really quickly, uh, going into committee budget allocations. This, I don't know who would, somebody up there had probably said something a little bit about this. But, but we have run into this a couple of times and I, and I've seen it. None of our committee budgets, our citizen committees have any type of a budget to work with. So anytime they need something to get done for what their, what their committee is, we're asking for a lot from our citizen committees. I would like to establish at least a dollar amount within there that they can kind of move against. Whether it be we send them off to training, whether we send them off to whatever. We're, we're taking that money, I, I would expect either out of our reserves or we're taking that money out of the department's operating fund. And so what we, what I intend to do within our budgets is that we're, any of the liaison departments that are managing that, that committee for us. It will have a line item now in there that says these, this is for the use of that committee that they are responsible to be liaison for. Right now, I'm recommending a baseline of three to five hundred thousand, because I'm not sure exactly what we need. But I do know, we have, we have citizen committees that do come in and ask for funding every once in a while for different things. And I, I, I feel like it's, they're, they're, they have to, I, that's the wrong term, it's not politically correct. They have to come in and beg the city to help them do what we've asked them to help them do for us. And so I want to, I want to establish this and make sure that we kind of reestablish those funding levels for our, our committees. And, and we will place those funds underneath the, uh, the liaison. Capital planning, maintenance and development policy, this is the third section of this, uh, high-level strategic initiative pieces. Building maintenance budgeting, uh, addition of increased annual expenses for the municipal court. Park development improvement fees, uh, we'll talk about that one. Expansion of the impact fee committee responsibilities and third-party funding. All right, there we go. Okay. You've already heard a little bit about this and, and I think we've talked about it. We do not have any, in our bu, in our departmental budgets for anybody that has a building. We don't have a line item that says this is building maintenance necessarily. We may have a contracted service or two that are in there, but I really want to make sure that we have the line items. And what I am recommending right now is two dollars per square foot of whatever that square footage is in there. By the way, I expect that because of the age of our buildings, that's not going to be enough. But going from zero to something is going to be better than that. I have an example there as to what it is. But I liken, I liken this conversation, and, and by the way, I love the bond referendum conversations. Those are the conversations we should be having as to how are we going to make these ends meet? But it does, it does show you what happens, and I use the police department building, and I don't mean it in a bad way for, for our officers and everything. But it wasn't the focus and nobody, nobody said you have to prioritize this as well too. Fire department buildings, they usually maintain them like they maintain their equipment. But police departments, they made sure that they were taking care of the pri, the primary jobs as well too. And that was keeping the officers on the street, keeping them safe and everything. But when you go through a police department building and you see ceiling tile missing, or you see light fixtures that aren't working. You see, you see different things that are, that are happening. We really should be funding into that. I, I liken it to even, uh, the buildings that we are actually trying to utilize for different things. I, the Center of Arts, the Laredo Center of Arts, they're in the old city hall building. We've, in the lease agreement, we left them responsible to take care of that building to a certain, certain level. But when you start talking HVAC, you start talking roof, and you start talking windows. Those are very, you see it with the Hamilton Hotel right now as well too. Those are very high-level expenses and they don't generally have the capacity to get that stuff done. So what happens is that the building suffers. We, we had the same thing happen with unit trade. Eight million dollars, we reinvested to fix everything that had gotten broken over the years. And I would rather do it on a regular basis because I believe it's cheaper to do it that way than to wait till it falls down around us and then say, hey, let's buy it, let's build something new. Let's build, let's do something different from what we've been doing.
Excuse me. Um, in, so in that spirit, when you say that you're, you're suggesting a budget of two dollars per square foot. Is there a way to just emphasize that this is not to transfer the normal janitorial budget that they're using currently? And replace it, right? This is for additional measures that will tackle those types of projects, the window replacement, looking to put money away for the HVAC system, all of that. So it's seen as in addition to.
Yeah, yeah, and we want to, we want to do that right now, right now for, if they do building maintenance in their building. They're actually transferring from the salary line item of, of, of positions that they've, they lost or they've salvaged dollars from to go and take care of if it's something that's urgent. But yeah, we, I think we have to do it a little bit differently from that structure. Uh, and if you notice, the last item there too, is that any of the major expenditures, if it's a big dollar item, we will try to capitalize it. We will try to leverage our, our, our bonding capacity and try to take care of those things at a, at a different rate. It really depends on how, how long we can survive without it being fixed or actually working the way it's supposed to.
Mr. Neve, I have a question on that. Um, is there, don't we have through accounting, like, uh, a useful life schedule as far as?
Yes, yes.
For every item that we own? I mean, if we're going to be putting money into maintenance, I, I think it would be better to maybe give a, a facilities person, a manager like that money and they can go off the, the useful life schedule and start replacing things as needed. Or if that item is still working, they could pass it for that year and kind of hold off or something. Only because I've come into situations that I've seen where, when you give a department or, or you give a, an entity uh, money for routine maintenance, you'll start to see a lot of remodeling, pa, painting, you know, like just kind of sprucing up. And I don't think, I, I don't want the money to get like, and then you're going to have a lot of different people interpreting what exactly is maintenance? What's allowed, what's not? I, I, I understand where you're going with this. I just, I think that, um, if we know what we have needs for, like for example, we were just shown the same as Arena has all these millions of dollars in need. Uh, all these other facilities that we have, and I know we have buildings that have needs. I just want to make sure that if we're going to go this route, we have some pretty strict rules for how that money's going to be spent. And I don't want it to be a use it or lose it situation, because if I, you give me forty thousand, I'm going to spend forty thousand, because if not, you're going to take it away.
Right.
You know.
But, but, and, but, and you allude to a little bit there, and, and I would, I would argue to a certain point that if we have, if we had anybody saying, well, I'm not going to go fix that broken stuff over there. Because we, we kind of have outstanding, uh, one of my, one of my first things I ask everybody, if it's broke, fix it. And, and, because don't leave it broken, because as we're going and having bond referendums, we're going and asking the public saying, trust us to take care of this stuff. It makes it really difficult if we leave it broken. And I, I think those are the things, you, if you see in the green section there also, it goes right along the lines with you.
I think any.
We do, we do need a facility responsibility within that. We, we take care of so many things so well, except our buildings, I think. We don't, we don't identify those and they are expensive to fix and maintain and, and actually replace if, if it gets to that point.
Especially the areas that the public gets to, you know.
Yeah, I, I agree. And so I just want you to know that I am asking everybody to try to find capacity within their budgets to add this in there. Because, uh, some of the departments have done a great job on their buildings, don't get me wrong with that. But there, you can see the buildings that we are not reinvesting in there. I, I, I look at like Bruni Plaza and we have the library system in there. But the rest of the building, we got all the asbestos out of the building, but it's still, we, we need two to three million dollars, I think, in order to put that building back into the shape of what it is. And I'm also a proponent and, and I think, I think this goes along with your vision. If, if that building is no longer needed for the city, then we should not be keeping that building. We should be getting rid of it. We, it should be, it should be in somebody else's hands where they can do something fantastic with it instead of us. But, uh, this, this is coming forward, um, because I, I really believe that this is, this kind of, this has affected so many of our conversations, uh, and, and you know it, ever since the unit raid. Uh, but I, I think of the relationship with Lucas for the Conseco House. I look at the, the Laredo Arts Center for, for downtown. I look at what we're trying to do with the federal courthouse. I look at what we're trying to do with Bruni Plaza. We have to reinvest in this stuff and we can't wait all, all the time for a CIP project in order to fix those things up to that level.
May, may I just, I just want to, so I, and again, I, I appreciate, um, everything that you're saying. And just, but just adding to that last point of not waiting, but I also think we need to see what the priorities are to make a decision.
Right.
That's, uh, that, that's facilitated by, um, critical thinking. And what can, what can we do this year? What can we do next year? And so on. And I don't, I don't think we've seen that because we've seen just in the past few years. We've cut out of, of our, of the CIP plan for discretionary funding. And where was the guidance from management at the time of saying that that could be better used in different areas?
Yep. I, I think we're all growing.
Yes.
We're all learning. All right, um, charter amendment. We have added another elected municipal judge within our system, so we now have two of them. Uh, we are estimating that the annual ongoing cost will be anywhere from two hundred to three hundred thousand dollars a year in order to operate our court system, the way our charter has implemented that. There is, there is, there's a fifty thousand dollar, I think, uh, office of renovation that doesn't happen every year. But it has to happen on the front side of that. But this will be what we are going to have to place into the budget. Uh, and so there will be that impact of, of the impact within the general fund as to how that, that's in there. And so this is why I think that, uh, we're, we're, we're trying to hold our, our expenses to our, our new revenue. But we have a lot of cleanup that we're doing as well too. That's the challenge we have within the system, uh, as to how, how to deal with those priorities.
Mr. Neve, what would that look like if we converted one of the associate judges? And it, it would be the two and then one associate instead of two and two.
Within the, within the charter, we have, we have two elected judges and two associate judges. One, each judge has one associate judge. Now, I don't know if it's in the charter that way. It is in the charter that way. So we, that is our system. What, what we are doing is the associate judges, because they are not elected bodies, they're actually appointed by the municipal elected judge. They will be essentially what we call contracted labor. That was the only way we could kind of work, even like with our doctors, our veterinaries and our, our, our attorneys that are serving as judges. That was the best way to do it is to operate them as a contracted position, because then it works within that municipal judge, so.
So, uh, didn't we have, we have one municipal judge with two associates? So now we have to have two municipal judges with two associates?
With, with one each, yes. That's, that's how our, uh, charter is, uh, written and passed.
It says that right there? Even with the amendment?
That's the amendment.
Okay, okay.
The, the difference with the associate judges, we had one judge, two associate judges. One was appointed by the city manager, the other one was appointed by the judge. With the new charter amendment, we have two elected judges and they get to both appoint an associate judge when they're unable to do their work. That's the difference within that. Just, I just wanted to share with you what the estimates are, because we're going to have to put that into the budget. This is a, this is actually a nice thing. Well, we'll find out if it's nice as it comes to your plate. I, I think it'll be the second meeting in April. We were trying to get it on the first one, but there was a, a notification that has to happen. But the park department went through all of the development improvement fees structure. They went through the planning and zoning commission. They got blessing from them. That was the first time we had our plan commission and our park commission actually meet in a subgroup to walk through these things. Because, uh, if you, if you're not aware of why, why we were doing it, the park development fees were not covering the cost to develop the park. And so what would happen is that we would utilize that money to help develop out the park. But then we would have to complement that with additional property taxes and everything in order to, to, um, to complete the park. So this is, this is bringing everything up to date, uh, with exactly how. We also give the benefit within this, this structure, and you'll hear all about this. I won't, I'm just not going to digress too much. But I wanted you to know, this is one of the, what I think is going to be a good win for us, uh, within that structure. Is that we also have given the developer the ability to, if they want the infrastructure built, go ahead and build it within your system. We can lease it from them and essentially design build, very similar to some of the other things out there. We'll lease it from them. They won't, they won't lose their shirt at building a public facility. But very similar to the streets and the water and the sewer and everything that get dedicated over. This is a way that we can do it with the park side as well too. All right? This, this goes into a twenty twenty-three item as well too, is that we had talked about, um, doing the impact fee committee. Uh, utilizing the technical review committee and creating the impact fee committee. This happened in twenty twenty-three. It's that, uh, it's sat on, on the back burner for a little while here. I just want to make sure you understand, we already have an impact fee committee. But it's actually, the liaison is our utility department. And I would say that we're not looking at just utility impact fees. We're looking at all of the, all the development that happens with that. So what we'll do is we'll be recommending to you the, the amendment of this committee to actually expand their duties out. We may move the liaison around. Just so you know, out of the nine positions we have on there, I think we have at least four to five openings already on that. So we'll renew this committee to do that work, so that we can get the information to you and say, this is what we should, this is how we can work together with our development community as to how we have to absorb these public improvements that they make.
Mr. Neve, they don't have any progress to present for this budget?
There is no progress to prevent, present at this point, because it was never, it was, that work was never completed. That's what I'm saying, is that this was placed on the back burner from the twenty twenty-three directive. It hadn't.
But didn't we have a consultant working on that? We had outsourced that.
We, we have a consultant working on different pieces of what the impact should be, but not on establishing an impact fee of, of all the city-type services and such like that. I don't think there was a consultant doing that part of the business. I, I can check, because the impact fee committee within our structure is underneath utilities.
Yeah, because I remember we have a consultant under utilities that was.
I'll, I'll have to, I'll have to check in that.
There should be some proposal already.
All right. Third-party funding is another one that we've revamped. You've already reestablished it as a civil partnership and engagement committee. Uh, my understanding is that we are walking through that, that process with all of our third-party funding. The reason I wanted to share with this one, because I think this is a good one as well too. Um, along with our support of all of these agencies and everything. What we're asking for is a little bit of assistance back with, with different functions that we do as well too. So, uh, depending on the amount of the value within there, then we want to structure it, uh, how we work together with the third parties, the little nonprofits. Um, I'm going to use one example because it is coming forward very soon, and that's like even with the Boys and Girls Club. I'm wanting, I am intending to remove the Boys and Girls Club out of third-party funding. Now, that's, that's the shock system, right? But the idea is that we should have a contract with the Boys and Girls Club. Not, not, they should not be beholden to us through third-party funding. They are providing a service for our, some of our population that the parks would do if we didn't have a Boys and Girls Club. We would, we would do something similar to that. So what I'm trying to do with the third-party funding is try to get all these groups out of the third-party funding that we should have actually agreements and relationships with outside of the third-party funding. Third-party funding, the way it's built now is that we're trying to give them, um, funding for up to three years in order to get them on their feet or, or to help them sustain their feet. The idea though is that like, especially with the Boys and Girls Club, they already have their program. We should be supporting that program as a contractual thing. I, I liken it to having the agreement with, uh, our, uh, Laredo Urban Agricultural Center as well too. Is that they're, they're kind of more of a pseudo group of us. But I would like to have an agreement rather than having them come in and say, where, where can I find funding to do my mission? So the whole goal of this is that we're trying to remove those things out of there. The city council did say that as well with the WBCA. I would argue that Pony League and some of these ones that are regulars, I would rather not have them a case by case every year. I would rather have a relationship built in there so that we can maintain and sustain that, that, that relationship through that window.
Also, Mr. Neve, with, when we hand out monies and things, we don't really have a good, um, way to check or like verify of expenditures or there's no follow-up. It's just, you know, here's your support and there's no kind of like, uh, It's just, you know, here's your support and there's no kind of like, uh, report card from them as far as like what was utilized for and, and, um, it's kind of difficult when it comes to the, the third-party funding.
Yeah.
Uh, councilmember, see you.
Thank you. I, I do believe there is, there, I know that third-party funding requires regular reports and the metrics that were given at the beginning of the request, the agencies are, are supposed to match up what has happened in that quarter with those requests.
So, yeah.
So I do think there is a, a structure.
Yeah, yeah.
Do we have that?
Really quickly, yeah, really quickly. Essentially, we're not calling it third-party funding anymore. If we provide them any support, it's about civil partnerships. It's about engagement with, with these groups. That's the significant difference within there. We may provide funding for that. We may do that. What community development did do is that they have a, a, uh, one person responsible to help with all, within that structure as well, too. And so all of those reports are given, all those, all of that information is actually reviewed at this time. And I would, I would argue that community development was always looking at that information. It just wasn't translating back as well as it could. And I think with this renewal that we've done is that you're gonna see that happen better within that structure.
Mayor Protem, am I?
Yes.
So my question to you is, have you reached out to like, now that you're doing to do these changes? Have we reached out to both the Boys and Girls Club and to see what's, what's the difference? What policies they have that, you know, once they come into our system, their, their policies are gonna change? Do they have to adapt to our policies? Or would they, you know, continue with their policies and continue the services the way they do it? Or are they, are they gonna have to go under our structure and follow our structure?
No, and essentially what's, what'll happen and, and not to negotiate with the Boys and Girls Club because they, they've been reached out to and we're walking through that. They don't have to change their processes. Essentially, though, they're going to commit that we're going to do these after-home programs. We're gonna do this for, for the public. We're gonna do that. And then we're gonna match it up to that. I will tell you that within the third-party funding, I think at times because this is a service provided to the community, we have not provided them the assistance that we could have if we would have done it contractually. So in my mind, I think they're gonna get, uh, they're gonna get a better deal within that structure. We're, we're gonna just hold their, their requirement to perform for us as well, too, for that, the, those kids that they are assisting. They are, they are leasing a building from us. That is, that's, at least I know the one building is ours. I don't know if the other one is, but they are leasing a building from us, so we have a lease agreement with them as well, too. So in my mind, I'm just trying to take, I'm trying to take the individuals that don't belong in third-party funding and, and say, we've got a relationship with you and it's gonna be a longer-term one.
Mr. Neb, um, the LEDC.
LEDC would be a very similar one to that as well.
They haven't been coming by to give their reports and stuff like that.
Yeah, they, they were, they were scheduled to do their report in October, but when they changed their executive director, the executive director asked for a little bit more time. I believe they have been ready to do their report and bring it up today. They're required to do one annual report and then they're supposed to do the periodic updates as, as we walk through that. So I, I can get them on that, but yeah, LEDC is another one that, uh, within the agreement that we are, we are implementing with them are the metric system to make sure that they are actually completing the work that we need them to do. It should be complimentary to our economic development department so that we're not overlapping those things. We don't have enough room to compete against ourselves, so we have to complement within that structure, so. Did I cover that well enough or are you gonna correct me?
No, just wanted to add. Tina Martinez, Community Development Director. We are monitoring their progress and we do require quarterly and end of year reports to see what benefit they did actually, all their party and hotel motel, what benefit they did bring to the community.
Can we get copies of that?
Of course.
Cuz we don't get them.
No, we, we can definitely share.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I'm just gonna keep chatting as well, too, and that way we keep moving as well, too. This is the slide that is like, are, what are we missing within our strategic, you know, if you have anything at any point in time, you don't have to have them tonight, but do you want us to look at any other fee structures? Do you want us to look at any other incentive programs? Do you want us to look at any other evaluation? We are going to do, and that's one of the last slides, so I, I'm a little bit out of order probably for making sure you see the whole picture of my, my map. We will be doing efficiency studies or at least initiating them. By the way, it takes time to get those things done the right way, but I, I just want to make sure that you're aware, what else are we, should we be looking at within this budget cycle? Nothing to say tonight unless you really have something that you want to put on there. Everybody's keeping notes of everything that we're talking about, so you're, you're influencing where we're headed anyway.
Councilmember King.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem. Basically, I, I've mentioned this before, but it's worth repeating as far as incentive programs with zero escaping incentive program and.
Yep.
Use of turf and any, anything as relates to water rates that any incentive programs to allow people to find a way to save money on their water bill. I would, we've, we've already passed several motions to bring a rebate or incentive program back, but I'm just, and I know Mr. Buzz has mentioned it, but I just, it's worth repeating.
Councilmember Melissa, see you.
Yes, thank you. The fee structures, you're talking about the proposed rate increases.
Any fee structure.
Any fee structure.
I, I mean, the fees don't make up a lot of our expenses and everything, but they should, a, a, as you noticed, well, twelve years or something with our last time we looked, we really soon as we looked at bridge fee.
Right. So I, I think that's, my question is, what is the timeline? Because I know you want to do this carefully, you want to do comparables, but at the same point, if it has been twelve years, this process does need to reach an end goal. And I'm wondering what timeline you're looking at.
This would be what establishes within this budget. So if you have an idea of something that we should be looking at, I'd like to know it sooner than later so that I can build it in the conversation. Just so you know, the rate studies will more than likely, the, the utility rate study and the, the bridge rate study, no matter where they're at within the system, because it's not on the floor today, they won't be counted in as revenue for this next year's budget for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. We will introduce it as new, we will implement the, the fee structure, but it won't be placed into the budget until that next budget cycle. So that, that's the challenge that you kind of have to watch for because it takes a while in order to establish how it gets implemented as well, too. There has to be notifications, there has to be all that stuff. So I, I would say that we're, we're in March right now, having it ready and set to go in October is a very aggressive timeframe for that. So, but anything that you provide me, and that's why there's not really a timeline on this, I don't think those fee structures, unless they're simple, simple type fees, will have a, have the speed in order to get on there in time to get there. We have increased our ability for research and everything where we can get you a response back on, on anything that you provide within ninety days at the, at the latest. And if it looks like it's gonna take longer, my, my, my directive for the departments is if they can't make it done in ninety days, then at least we're gonna have another conversation with the council to say, this is what, this is what a real timeline looks like. But, so ninety days if it works for, for at least that. But that's where, uh, there is no, there's no real set area.
Councilmember, um, Alyssa, see you.
Yep.
Oh, just to, um, for incentives also, just if we could be looking at the inner, inner-city housing incentives just for development for housing.
Yeah, and I would say that they're not gonna make or break the, the, the budget really because they're very specific uses, but, but they all play a part of the whole strategy to not wait. Let's bring this stuff forward. Otherwise, I think our, our group should be telling the council saying, I don't know if you should do this at all. We should have that conversation, give you guys the ability to actually help direct with your vision.
Mr. Neb, also, I think it's helpful to reevaluate some, maybe some decisions that were made in the past in terms of things that affect us, having trouble with maintenance going forward, like our streets, things like that.
Definitely.
Um, parking on the parking ordinance that we have with the ongoing issues. You know, I, if you present some suggestions to us as terms of what you think we should modify fee schedules to be or what the recommend, I think it's easier than asking us, well, what do you all want us to do? Because if you ask us, we're gonna say cut rates and cut fees cuz that's, that's, you mean, we want to try to save the citizens money, but you all are telling us what, what needs to happen from a fiscally irresponsible side.
Hopefully what you're starting to see, and this is what I warned you about, keeping me for another year as well, too. I will ask you first to try to get your, your vision, your opinions within this structure. If it's something that I believe in, I would be bringing it back for you and having you react to it that way as well, too. I think that's, that's, that's the piece that has been missing within this whole structure is that we are not having those conversations and, and, and I think those are the conversations. That's your work as well as my work as far as how to get that done. And so we're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna, we're gonna be bringing these things forward as fast as you guys coming up with your ideas about what we need to touch as well, too. I know of one out there and I'm just gonna throw it out there because it's the ones of you that have been involved with it as well, too. We will be bringing forward a conversation on taxi cabs very soon. And because it has been, it's been an issue that has been out there sitting. We, we talk about all different kinds of options as to how to deal with it. By the way, the state has stepped in and implemented their own thing for Uber and Lyft, and we can't touch that one. It's kind of like the conversation we had with the fiber optics, people I'm working in the right away. We, we have, we have abilities within our, our system that we can make it better and bring it up to today's thing, so it's coming.
Thank you.
Next item, the mayor and district budget allocations. This is something I have mentioned in the past budgets as well, too. We didn't get as far as I would like to. I would really like to have out of each and every one of you a district budget for the annual to place in there rather than just have a big number and then say, all right, you can, you can figure out how you're gonna spend it later. I, I kind of liken it to, well, this is a very simplistic way. I, I, this is probably not the best solution, but, but it is one that I can make sure I, you, you all understand exactly what I'm saying. I provided you with my entire leave schedule for the year for, for twenty-twenty-five. I told you what days I'm going to not be in the office, what days I'm going to be here. As I get closer to those dates, I may not, that, that training may change or that activity may change, and so I may still be here for that. But I gave you an annual calendar. I said, this is what I expect's going to happen within that window and it's going to adjust throughout the year. I would ask the same thing with your district budgets, is that if we know exactly what you want to get done, we can plug it into our whole system and make sure that you're taken care of rather than as, when they pop in there. So I do want to make sure that we do the district budgets. The amendment and use of the purpose of the council's.
Councilmember Don Haan, sorry, Mr. Neb.
Yep, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Don Haan, that's question.
And I like, I love the idea, Mr., yeah, I'm sorry, I love the idea. The only thing that's, for me, it's like, we're still behind, if anything, we're still behind, we're still, we're behind twenty-two, twenty-three. We're still doing those, uh, I'm sorry, uh, on those strength updates? Yeah, the updates.
Yep.
And you're asking for us to be, you know, to give you a, a schedule of what we wanted, what we want to do for the future, which is a great idea, you know? Giving, you know, all these projects and we put them in order. But, you know, we gotta catch up first and you, once we were there, oh, it's easier for us to say, okay, we don't have to, you know, those budgets, that, that money's already allocated for this, now let's work on this. But if we can't get there yet, well.
Let me, let me meet you halfway with that as well, too, because I, I, I understand exactly because we have, we have funds out there sitting from twenty-sixteen forward. And so some of you are carrying additional dollars for different projects. What I, if the system was pristine and the system was working the way it was, you would provide me your list of projects for this year only. So when I, when I provide you and I say, this is your budget for this year, if you meet me partway and say, well, that's, these, these are, these are the projects that I want to do with that money. You guys are still working on the old money as well, too, and we have to find time for that within our budgets, right? Whether we contract it out or not. If you, if we can kind of find a balance within that, because I would argue, if we wait until you spend all that packed money because, just so you know, councils, we're in twenty-twenty-five and the councils all the way back to twenty-sixteen haven't spent some of that money as well, too. And so I want to make sure, I, I want them to give you guys the ability to utilize those funds because they were obligated for that purpose. But then we also have this year's budgets. And so I don't, I don't know what it looks like, but we'll get there closer.
And the thing is like, and I'm sorry, Mayor Protem, I'm, I, um, we're seeing these projects, we're, we're going, so right, right now, and I'm, I'm not, I'm not trying to criticize this, this idea, and I love the idea, like I said.
No.
And it's, it's good to be prepared. But the thing is, we're going, right now, we're going back because of, let's say, there's this miscommunication we had back in the day or whatever on the line, the, the updates on the line, the changing of the lines, uh, you know, the vows, uh, there's, uh, the program that we had on, on, uh, the utilities side. So we're going back to it and, and it sets us back because we're trying to create more, let's say, the infrastructure, it's not there yet. We might have like a, a, a mind to say, hey, we want to do a project, we want to do a water park. Our infrastructure ain't there. So it's hard for, for us, once again, it's hard for us to continue in it, what we should, with the old projects that are already there. Right now, we're doing, we're dealing with the sports complex. Sports, the sports complex should have been done, I don't know, was allocated, what, twenty, well, twenty-ten or twenty, twenty-sixteen? So, you know, we should have seen that, you know, pretty much done by this time, right?
But be aware as well, too, as we're, as we're having, this is a good conversation I have as well, too. The sports complex is a city project, not a district project. The, uh, the nature of a lot of the different things of what we're doing are city projects, not district projects.
Yeah.
The ones I'm, ones I'm, we can always have the conversation on the citywide projects as to how to get there. That, those would not go into your district budget.
Yeah, and I remember what I mean, it's a city project, but nevertheless, it's also... Depending what's around that, let's say the sports complex, my thing is, if the sports complex is built, the development's starting, it's, it's going to start growing around it.
Right.
Right? So we won't know the impact or what the necessities of the community until it grows around it. So we can guess, say, you know what, I want to make this road over here, I want to do these, these sidewalks over here because we don't know yet.
Right.
We don't know if it's gonna grow, if it's gonna impact, you know what I'm saying?
Hopefully, hopefully we do our development correctly. It's not, again, it's not a district thing to add sidewalks or anything else. It should be, it should be done with the development that is occurring, but, but really quickly on that.
Mr. Neb.
Yes.
Uh, councilmember King had a, a quick, a comment.
Yep, okay.
Oh, sorry, I was actually just gonna say, if anyone's having issues spending their district priority funds, I'm happy to.
But, so let me, let me, let me, let me share a little bit.
Sorry, Mr. Neb.
You may or may not be aware of this, but, and because we, we, the way we kind of function within it, it, it actually just happens. You as individual city council members are not allowed to spend any money of the city's money, whether it be in the district or not. It is actually through the city manager as being the, the administrative head, or you bring it to the, the council and the council says, we're gonna spend it that way. It converts over to what it is. You don't really have the ability to do that, but I, I would say that we need to wake up just a little bit because San Antonio, being a good example, they actually have some of that already built into some of their systems as well, too, within a certain dollar amount. You'll see that here in a second.
Councilmember King.
If I may, I think what you're referring to is San Antonio because if you look at their bond packages that they do every five years, basically what's in those items that is getting funded in their bond every five years is what we use for a lot of it.
Correct.
Is what we use for district priority funds.
And you'll start to see the difference here with, with my, within these conversations of what I'm, we're recommending to a certain point.
No, councilman King, you can't have any of our monies.
Yeah. Alright, so, so I've talked a little bit about the, having, oh, yes.
Oh, no, I was just gonna add to, to, to the, some of that conversation in the sense of, it's being strategically planned out though in some of these other cities and it's stated line, line by line. And also, I mean, it would be helpful to understand what are the responsibilities of some of the departments versus where the discretionary money should be sent. As in, are, are, is Public Works planning to, um, pave X, Y, Z streets and add sidewalks or are they not? Because then I don't think that there's a prop, a really great process of the way that we use our discretionary.
And I, and I would agree. Uh, I think we're trying to work on that. I do have a, I had a white paper that I put together to try to explain the districts to the cities, because I, I also believe that our departments at times, when, when a, when a district council member comes asking for something, they say, well, are you gonna put the money in to take care of this? That shouldn't always happen that way. Uh, in, in my mind, there are certain responsibilities that the city should be taking care of. Happy to, happy to have support from the district at the time when we're doing that work. But there are also things that you are doing individually within your districts that it'd be good to have the city partner with you rather than carrying the full ball as well too. And so I, I put out a paper trying to distinguish between those two as to how we can work closer together. And that was from a past conversation about, uh, making sure that the city council is a part of our organization, not really an, an independent outside of it. And that's the structure. So the district budgets are, are really something that I would really like to aspire to because again, if we can get it in some type of a format, we can at least tell the public what we're, how, what we're aiming on and what we're doing. Alright, here's, here's the next one. This came up in the last conversation at the council meeting. I wanted to bring this up as, as an option. I think I shared it with some of you as well too. The amendment of the use and the purpose of the council assistance. We had a one conversation and I wanna make sure I distinguish the difference. It was asked about the internal auditor as opposed to the council assistants, you know, and why can't, why can't we have other employees report to the council? In a council manager form of government within the charter, the internal auditor does not affect operations. They are not an administrative body. They are, they, they can go in and look into a department and say, this is how that department operates. They can't, they don't influence, they recommend. A council assistant is, or any of this other staff, they are administrative in nature of what they are. And so that's why they have to report underneath the city manager into that structure. I, I say that because when we look at this, I, I went out and, and did a research on all of our comparable cities, again, the ones larger and everything else. Because, uh, the, the real question here is that how can we get help within our district model as to getting some of this stuff done and everything? Our current system is with the, the mayorial and council assistants. I will tell you that there is room within the structure based upon, Austin, they have five to seven assistants that'll help out of the city manager's office, help to all the district offices. We have San Antonio that has, I think, two to three within that structure. This, you'll, you see the model here is that we're trying to grow Laredo up as well too. There is the value of having one council assistant per elected official up there, if that's what you wanna do. But then we're going to have to add additional work within that structure as to what they're doing. So be aware that that is, that's the, that's the analysis that we're going through. Some of you have expressed that, you know, a half a person is not enough for the things that I'm trying to get accomplished. Some of you say, no, a half is plenty. I want you to have the conversation. I want you to think about this a little bit because I wanna make sure that we build it into the budget because essentially if we go to one council, uh, council assistant per elected official, that will double the budget for the council assistants, because we have four, we'll, we'll go to eight. And so I wanna make sure that you're aware of that impact too, that, that, whether it's, whether it's good or bad, that's up to you. It's, I think it's really about putting them to work and doing all the things that, that they're supposed to do. I would argue that those council assistants are more than event planners. They spend a lot of time doing that for, for all the different activities that we're doing out there, but that's not all that they do. They are trying to track projects. They are trying to watch your budget. They're all trying to do all those different pieces. So understand that as you walk through that, but.
Mr. Napp.
Yep.
I think it would be helpful, I mean, even if we didn't go that route where we're each getting our own, if that's the route we go with on. I think it is helpful to have like a, someone on ours, on our, on, on our office to help us coordinate. Because, um, it is, it does get overwhelming and it is a lot of stuff to keep on top of. And, um, it, it would help to have somebody like, that our, our assistants could also work with to help them. And I know that's where the assistant city managers come in and all that, but they're also getting directives from, you know, from, from you. And, and so it's, it's, there is some need for some modification there. I just don't know exactly what the answer is.
So, so in the nature of the structure of that is that all these, from all these other cities that are council manager forms, they're essentially reporting through the city manager. So they're the ones that hire fire, you know, discipline within that structure, but they take their day-to-day direction from you as a council member. Kinda like our system with the half-times. It's just that they have, our half-times have to figure out what's the most important priority for each one of you. And you gotta do a great job with our people for that. But I, I, I wanted to walk through that a little farther. There was a conversation about whether or not that we should include them within the travel allowances as such too, because I know that council members have taken their own trips to see other cities and different things and they want, they want that resource available for that purpose. Be aware, be looking at all of this. And I, you all have your own opinions about where that is at, but I'm saying that in order to, to address this, this question that was, that was placed on the agenda and everything, this is a model that can work within the structure of a council manager form, if that is where you would like to utilize it.
Councilmember Napp.
Otherwise, otherwise you stay with the consolidated system we have where if you need legal help, you call the legal department. If you need administrative help, you call the city manager and so on, so.
I think, but I think it's important to, to identify, I'm still, obviously I'm the new guy in town, but it, the, trying to identify the actual scope of work that they're responsible for is, is very difficult because there's a, uh, first, just thinking of instead of event planning right now. The scheduling part of it, uh, is coming from ten different locations at one time for them. And I just integrated, thank you to our IT guy, I just integrated the, uh, so important, the, uh, scheduling process into my calendar. Uh, I missed several meetings because of it. I wasn't, you know, I wasn't in line with what my job needed to be done here. And so I think if we identify what their roles are right now, I think it's half of this, uh, half of the problem gets solved right there and then. Because that'll initially tell you whether or not there's enough time in their day to merit a second person, right? And so, uh, and then what that second person's job ought to do. I mean, because if it's gonna be that, yes, they're in need of it, but not really a hundred percent of the second person. It's just gonna create, I think, issues.
So, so the conversation, you know, and it goes back to old council members saying, well, when I was a council member, I didn't even have a council assistant yet. The world has evolved and I think, I think when you look at Austin. Yeah, I, I don't know, I don't know who to direct that to, but, but, but. But then we actually had, I think at one point we had one assistant for all. And then we evolved to the halftime version and everything else. You know, I, I think that, don't be afraid of the evolution either. That's what I wanna make sure you understand. We're, we're, we're all, we all get our blinders on and say, we've got to be only one way or another way. But in my mind, we have to evolve. Laredo is not a small town, no matter how much we think it is. It is a large city and, and we should be behaving in, in that manner as we tackle these kind of issues. We, we can't, and I think a lot of the conversations of whether you're, whether you're on the side of an issue or another one, the way the conversation's going is that everybody's telling us to grow up. Be a big city, do our work differently. Even, all of us are doing the same thing. So I just wanted to make sure I laid that out there.
Uh, Mr. Napp, Councilmember Ms. Garro has a comment.
I was, I was gonna add the point about the, um, in terms of that, yes, we're evolving and that also takes it, but we also have to take a, a look at how, how, how decisions are made and how, how we get there in the sense of, could we work together to add items to an agenda rather than each one of us having three items per agenda, which is quite chaotic for the, for the, for the city. Um, but just adding.
And, and, and this is what, this is the, this is the stuff that we have to be kind of evolve with, within that structure. We, you know, the consi, the council assistants assist with constituent services as well too. If you can't answer the phone, they will, you may direct them and say, I'll call them back and I'll find out exactly what's going on with that. Depending on how we wanna operate within our structure and that's, that's the nature of, of that. I would argue that all the way in the Viva Laredo Plan, it is about our transparency. It's about better communication. We talked about that the last council meeting as well too. All those pieces are very important within the structure. This all goes into assisting that. You all have a different idea of how to get there and that's the, that's the fun of democracy. But, but in my mind, I just wanted to make sure you laid out there that we were there. We talked about the travel allowances with them. We can talk about the different job responsibilities that they do. I apologize and there is nobody, Councilmember Garza, that would ever want you to miss a meeting, so, uh, we want you there.
Well, I mean, threw it off, threw it off all to their own. It's just, uh, you know.
We wanna make sure that they happen, so.
Getting me online was gonna be, it was a huge task in itself.
Alright, um, potential use of promotion funds for district projects. You guys went through, not just you as a city, this city council, but every city council. We used to have what's called priority funds. We used to have what's called promotion funds. We have travel funds. Those are, essentially those were the three orders. I, I remained away from the bond, the bonds that we do every year because that'll be a longer conversation that we all have to have as to whether or not we have district-centric stuff built into any of the capital bonds that we go out and borrow for. This model here about what I'm, what I'm kind of wanting to discuss with you about promotion funds, again, it's about a, um, it's an evolution of where we are at. I am using San Antonio's model for this because San Antonio provides every district fifty thousand dollars a year. And here's the difference on this. It's not just for, uh, speed humps. It's not just for signage. It is also if you wish to provide assistance to any of our nonprofits that wanna use our services as well too. And I think some of you have heard that I really, I really don't like waivers, because one, they're not really a waiver. It is, it is a, essentially a sponsorship of assisting some nonprofit trying to do something in the city and we're, we're saying that we're happy to sponsor with that. But I don't like them coming case by case. I would like to have them built in or at least a process for that. And so this process here was is to increase the promotional funds to twenty-five thousand dollars for every physician. But also say that if, uh, there is a waiver requested for a nonprofit, that those funds would actually be used. On the other side of this thing, I've placed in there a city's level promotion fund as well too, where if the district says, I wanna help support this by five hundred dollars, the city is going to do a match of five hundred dollars as well too. Now we've got this relationship between the legislative body and the, and the administrative body, taking care of these needs, so that you're not the one carrying all the, all the, all the cost. The challenge we have right now, when you, when you bring it to the floor of the council and say, I wanna waive these fees, the departments are eating that cost essentially. That's what's happening. It's not, it's, it's not, it's free to them. It's free to who's using it. The city still is paying for all the costs that's associated. That's why I call it a sponsorship, not a waiver. What I wanna do is be able to give you guys the ability, and this is, this follows San Antonio's CCPF fund, just so you know, that's what they call it. If you wanna go out and look at what that scenario is, but it also provides for the, the sponsorships for any of the activities that are happening. We can do a citywide, district-wide, it doesn't really matter. It provides the city to actually help balance that as a partnership. Well, so you're not the ones carrying the entire ball for that. But I would like to make sure that we're talking about this because in my mind, this is actually your budget. Outside of this, the promotion and the travel, this is what's in your budget for the council.
Mr. Napp, I, I'd like to suggest that, um, that we look at, um, events that council has given the directive to go ahead and sponsor, like at Sames Arena or Unit Trade. Um, look at what we've done this past year, maybe even this year and last year. Put a number to that, put a number to those events, so that we can make the decision during budget time that we're gonna go ahead and we can see how much that's sponsored. Cause it's, you know, they come to us, they ask for help, we wanna help. But then it's a twenty thousand dollar ask or a thirty thousand dollar ask and, and here we are during third-party funding, kind of, you know, picking and choosing. And, and I think revamping of the third-party funding is helpful in terms of, there's a lot of community, there's a lot of, um, organizations that have needs that we also have other organizations coming in that wanna get their feet off the ground, but they can't because they're just not part of this longstanding system of all these other organizations just always get funding and they're used to it. And we look at how much they got last year and we try to either batch it or give them more and it's hard to give them less. Um, I think the model in how we help would, would be helpful. I think we need to look at all of those costs. Anticipate that if we were to sponsor everything again this next year, this is how much it would cost. So we get that true picture. I don't nece, I don't necessarily think it needs to come out of our office per, per se. It's just, I mean, we can do it that way, but I think it would be helpful.
The, the main, the main point I'm trying to make on this, I wanna budget for this as well too. And I, and I, I, that's what we will do. We will go back and we will see exactly what our history was. What's the trend, right? What, what do we run into? The, it's kind of, kinda interesting. Every one of our, our, our service areas are, whether it be the arena, whether it be unit trade, we have a, a cost of associated, if you wanna utilize it for an hour, you wanna use it like four, four hours, there's a cost there. Then we have this nonprofit rate as well too. And then we have, then we have them coming in. And so I don't know exactly how we, we pick which ones get it for free or don't have to pay anything and the city's gonna cover that cost as opposed to any other nonprofit that's out there, because I think that's where you guys have, have tried to balance that system out as they come and make those requests.
Well, last time I wanted to have a meeting there, it was gonna be like ten grand or something for two hours and it, we all, we don't realize how expensive it is.
My question is, is that those, uh, that money, this money that's we're allocating or that you're proposing that we should have as a budget, that would, would that cover, that, those events, would it cover s, if staff employment as well, the hourly rate of, of the individuals who are sponsoring or helping us out for the event, for parks and for all that?
Right. It would, it would cover what, what you believe should be covered within that. I, I'll, I'll put it together, but, uh, in San Antonio, they make all the, all the individual, when they waive, well, when they utilize this program to, to take care of the fees, they won't cover salaries, which means that the entity has to cover salaries. And my, my challenge is that, uh, we've had, we've had all, a, a lot of conversation with our police and fire, the support of, of those big, big services within these, these things. Our costs continue to climb because we, there's, there's, that's not politically correct either. There's stupid people out there that cause problems for any of our people trying to have a good time. And so that means we're going to prepare appropriately for that. And I don't, I don't disagree with either one of the chiefs saying, these are the resources we have to have out there. But there's other ways to get it done as well too. I think one of them was that we're requiring you to have a security, to put, hire a security firm rather than us to do certain pieces of that as well too. But we can build it any way you want, essentially is what we can do. I would recommend that because our, our, if we don't build it into these and we actually justify out exactly what we're trying to do, the department is the one that eats the cost. We, it still gets paid for, but my.
But they're, they're still, they're still getting the cost with the salary.
Right.
So the main thing is there, what we, we, the services that, that the city provides, when we give our promotional money are for, for whatever the, the events that we got, what we're covering, or what we've been told is that we're covering the salaries at the time that are, that, uh, that they consume.
It, it depends on how it comes forward to you, uh, because there have been some, uh, and I, I just think about the WBCA from last year. It was like, city, you need to help take care of WBCA's stuff. That was, that was the directive. I don't know exactly what that means, other than we took care of everything that they needed in order to get it done. So it really be, it depends on how you lay it out on the table as to how we're gonna cover that and, and what we're gonna do with it. But in my mind, I really wanna get it into the budget because they, you know, having, having us try to find where the money's coming from, there's only a couple sources. We're gonna take it out of the reserves or we're gonna make the department have that cost eaten in there. And I think we've used the example of the Parks Department as being the example. We give them money to go out there and mow the grass and go, go, you know, paint the lines and everything else. If we go and we move their resources over here and say, no, go take care of this thing instead of that, then they're not mowing the grass. That's, it's just, we have to make up that difference. And, uh, you know, and, and I think the police and fire do a really good job of providing that service. But it's at an overtime rate too, because we have our primary jobs that we have to protect. So the overtime, and I would say that the overtime's nice when they like the overtime, but if we wear our people out, they're not gonna be available for our primary work either. And those are the things that we have to keep watching for with this. In my mind, I thought San Antonio at least had a model there that we could kinda build off of. Where we can, you, where this, in San Antonio, they can actually provide support to these entities that way. Ours is kind of, um, this is the way we've always done it. And so I'm trying to put some sense to it. Why, how do we wanna do it and why do we wanna do it that way?
Councilmember Napp, have you any more questions? Uh, Mr. Napp, just to go back to that, I mean, it, it, it is important to have this conversation because like, for example, third-party funding, right? All these entities are competing for this pot of money, but then you'll have an entity outside of that process come and ask us to sponsor something that, um, there's no budget for, or they didn't have to compete with the other entities for, even though it's something that we normally sponsor or whatever. So, um, I do think it's, it's good to, and like, for example, Washington's WBCA, like not to, not to single them out or anything, but, um, when they asked us for the third-party funding to put on their event, it didn't include the, I don't even know how much we spent in extra police money to cover the security part of that, that we had to absorb for that event, which turned out to be prob, probably a lot of money, which we, we do probably need to see that. But those are all components to these things that are, that were not part of the original, you know, agreed amount that we would sponsor, but now we kinda have to give them another hundred thousand dollars in sponsorship because we have to protect public safety.
And, and.
Councilmember Ciaran, you have a question?
Oh, I guess just to, to add that, in, in any event where the city's sponsoring or, um, an event or, or an organization, it would be a good practice if there are guidelines and an application across the board, whether it's third-party funding or even council priorities. But there should be, there should be some, I, I, I would hope that, that I could garner council support in setting up, that, that we set up guidelines and an application process so that it's, but fair. in setting up, that we set up guidelines and an application process so that it's fair.
Yes, if I may. If I'm not mistaken, councilman, the councilwoman, I'm sorry. We do have the application, especially when we have, what a tournament like they have, or like for instance, they gotta go to, to the, to Geraldina, which is the main office for sports or for parks and wrecks. And they submit an application, they pay their fees. And then if we gotta, if they ask for sponsorship, I think we do have, I think we do have the enroll.
For, for some of them, for some of them. The ones, the ones I think we're, we're talking a little bit about are the ones that come in after the fact or, or weren't prepared. I think in our last third-party funding conversation, last year's budget, we had three nonprofits added in at the last date saying, well, I want to make sure that these people get these funds as well too. And they never applied in third-party funding. And so how do we fit them into the third-party funding? And, and so I, I think those are those, those pieces that are there. And utilizing, and I'm not picking on WBCA either, because they do a wonderful job for us as well to bring in, in that stuff. But I don't know if everybody's aware that the WBCA only has this many activities. All the other activities are associate groups within the WBCA. So there, there is a balancing act. So are we providing the benefit to the associate groups as well as the WBCA itself? Because what happens, our associate groups like to piggyback on the WBCA name because that helps them have value for what their activity is. So those are the things that we have to kind of watch for with the city. I'm going to, I'm going to keep moving because I want to, I wanted to try to get you guys out of here before eleven.
You got thirty minutes. Thirty minutes.
But, but know that this is coming forward, know that we will have further conversation on these things. Because I, I, I'm not going to implement them on top of you, but I want to make sure you understood how we make the sausage as well too. What, what are we walking through? Because we don't avoid any of these conversations anymore. I do want to know with this in this section, are there any other programs and initiatives we should be including or excluding? Are there any new services, initiatives and expansion you wish to prioritize? Any low priority programs recommended for reduction or elimination? Just so you know, when we get into the efficiency conversation, I got one, I think only one slide for that, maybe two. We're going to get there anyway and we'll be providing recommendations back to you. But I want to ask you what you think we should be looking at as well too. That's the, in my mind, that's that relationship that we're supposed to have. And so I want to give you the opportunity and then I'm going to give you all the crazy ideas that we have as well too.
Well, Mr. Neve, I think we all gave you some pretty heavy feedback. And we've been going item by item. I think that's why it was kind of helpful not to save it to the end. And we went through that. But if anybody has any other things to add in terms of that, if not, we can have that conversation again.
The last part on our budget, on, on that conversation with this, we're kind of done with the budget conversation. We're going to run into the bond referendum and then the efficiency study, but
I'm sorry, just, just one, I'm sorry. But this, so that we can be clear. This is a, a moving, living, breathing, breathing organism. We're going to be able to adjust as, as we go along. I mean, obviously there's a lot of questions asked right now. I'm taking notes over here. Still a task for next time. And then we'll just continue to update as we move forward, right?
Yes, sir. Yeah, yeah. The, the thing is that in October first, we will have a balanced budget. Again, we're going to do a lot of wonderful things for the city. We will not be able to do everything that we want to do. But I don't think the council, at, at least in the recent history, has had an opportunity to weigh in before we start building the budget. One, my primary job is to build a budget for this, this city. And, and I, I take that responsible, but it has to be based upon where you're at. Otherwise, and you saw some of the conversations over the years, we adjust the budget so much. I don't know if it's my budget by the end when you vote for it, by the way, because it's, it's like we make so many adjustments. So this is my ability or my opportunity to hear from you and say, okay, now when we build a budget, I can say, this is what you talked about. This is why it matches up to that. But I appreciate your time on the budget. As you can know, we are doing, we're doing the city, citizen surveys as well too. You do have a survey up on your
Do we have a plan ready for whatever, what's going around the nation, you know, the terrorists and all that? Another plan for the budget, just, you know, in many cases, it changes the outcome of what, you know, where our main source is coming from. Do we have another, do we have a plan B or a plan C?
We, we do not have a set, we talked a little bit about it, I think, when Mr. Sparza was up here. We don't have a set plan that says, this is where we're going to be at for that. What I, what I would tell you is that we have, we've, we've looked at what the, the potential impact is of what may or may not happen. We believe that it will be a short-term impact. If anything on that federal level, it'll be a short-term impact, not a long-term. It's just that our whole industry can't, can't function with a decision that happens like that, right? That's, that's the nature of what we have. So we, we have, we have assumptions within that mix of that. We'll be able to provide you, I, I can tell you that because that's part of the conversation within this budget. Depending on what we add or take away within that, well, and this will be in this alternative for the bond referendum. This, this probably hits you a little bit closer when we get to that conversation. Is that if we don't do it this way, then I'm going to be asking you to do it this way.
That's, that's
There are pieces in there. Now, if you tell me not to do it that way, then the next idea is that, well, then we're going to have to drop these programs off the list in order to stay balanced within that. That's the hard nature of what it is, but there will be some of that in this next part.
And the reason I'm asking is because we're around the corner of whatever's going to happen. And it's like, Revy, it's, you know, pushing to this budget. And then it's, and you see all these changes, like, okay, so do I ready for that? Just in case the public comes back to us, what is it that you're going to do with a new budget? You know, now I'm saying that we have these tariffs.
Yeah, because these alternatives in here will actually work for any, if we have an economic downturn, then we can, we'll have that adjustment cycle within there. I just can't tell you right now without having a conversation with you because a, a program that I would say is not the highest priority, you may all disagree with.
Yeah, I agree with you. I agree with you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Neve.
Mayor Potem, council, we, we did have, we have some slides. If you want to look at the marketing plan of the bond referendum, or we can jump right into the alternatives. Because the, the alternatives actually tie closer to what, what the budget conversation is. But I wanted to make sure you had an opportunity to see some of the information that we're putting out and everything. But if you, if you want me to speed up, thirty minutes, you said?
Yeah, you're, you're
For me asking that question, I lost five minutes. Thank you. Would you like me to just continue on with these pieces?
I'd like to see the marketing part.
All right, let's do that as well too. Let's, let me jump out of here.
Which part is that, Mr. Neve?
I'm sorry?
Oh, just slides, right?
It's, is it on your presentation or it's something else?
This is not my presentation. This is, this is from our consultant and our, our PIO for, this is, this is what we put together. And this is where, how we're tackling.
I think, I think you, you would probably need to just summarize all this for us afterwards, before we like adjourn.
Okay. Do you want me to go ahead and finish my stuff first?
No, after the
All right, all right. Let's do that first and then I will, I will speed through mine. Because the nice thing is we got the slides, we got the handouts. We will, we will post all that information on the budget conversation, the budget workshop as well too, so everybody gets that. See, I lost five minutes. I'm trying to steal their five minutes too. But, no, thank you. I'll get out of the way.
Mayor and councilmembers, my name is Noraido Negrón. I'm the Public Information Manager. And I'm just going to give you a little bit of a recap of to where we're at right now with our campaign. And then I will also introduce our marketing consultants that have been helping us with the entire campaign and where we're at right now and what's coming after this, okay? So first and foremost, the Public Information Office is leading the bond referendum marketing campaign effort at the moment. Our goal is to maintain, of course, a consistent and factual flow of information to our public about the bond referendum. We want to ensure, of course, that our residents have the tools to make an informed decision. Now with that said, to ensure that the bond campaign was effective and informative, we brought in a marketing agency, which is PMDG, a professional marketing firm with extensive experience in community engagement and public information campaigns. Now, we have been consulting with them as well as we've been consulting with other PIOs with the city as well as our legal department for all of this information. Our team has been consulting with other cities that have also executed their bond campaigns very successfully. And their PIO offices have handled most of the work for that information, like San Antonio Corpus, Austin, et cetera. Where so they're all, have been telling us that we're on the right track by following a, a similar approach. And like we mentioned, we have consulted and gotten approval for all the materials that are out there right now from our legal department before we even, you know, put any kind of information out. I just wanted to go on the overview efforts up to date as of right now. Again, our primary goal is to educate the community on this. And, and we want to make sure that the community understands what is a bond, of course, first and foremost. Then also how bonds have historically happened here in our community and what projects are being proposed, right, on the four projects and how they align with the city's growth and infrastructure needs. We've already made significant progress with the printed materials, video production, community outreach efforts, and also with the marketing agency on board. We're amplifying this reach. We only had literally very limited amount of time so that we can get all this information together. This process usually takes months in order for us to start from beginning to end. So, so far on the branding and messaging, we've developed and finalized all the artwork for the bond-related materials. We've created already informational cards that we introduced this to you all and mayor during the Washington DC visit, as in it was well received. Now, these cards will also be distributed at the upcoming informational sessions and also other community events that we are going to be involved in. Now, we've also done digital imprinting advertising. So the artwork has already been done for billboards across the city. You're already, will start seeing these. They are already out, as well as ads developed for newspapers to ensure, of course, coverage across print and digital platforms. And I believe it also came out in the Sunday newspaper already. Video and radio spots, we've also have done the initial video highlighting that the city will go out for a bond and has been completed and distributed. That's also been, it's, it's already out. Two additional videos are in production that will be coming out this week. And that will be what is the bond and the history of the bonds in Laredo. We didn't want to put a lot of information out to the community so fast because it is very extensive and we want to make sure that the, that the, the community first knew from us that we're going out for a bond. Now we're going to explain to them a little bit more about the bond and how we're going to do this. The informational sessions, there's three of them and we have scheduled those. The first one will be tomorrow at the Joey Garra Public Library. That's at six PM. Then the next one will be on Thursday and that's at the South Florida Wick Clinic. And then April second will be at the Fasken Recreational Center. And so what we were trying to do is to make sure that we have all of the areas of the city covered so that everybody has the opportunity to come, ask questions. These informational sessions are going to be very interactive with our community. We want it to be that way because again, it is a lot of information for them to process and we just want to make sure that everyone is understanding. I'm going to stop here because I would ask our consultants to come up here so that they can show you a little bit more about their work and how they've been able to help us.
Thank you, Noraida. My name's AB Barrera and I am Co-CEO, PMDG Marketing Communications. And I'll, I'll go quick. I think, you know, I may have chatted with you a little bit about kind of what our bond referendum campaign looks like. But just as Noraida mentioned, we've been working closely with the Communications Department, the Office of the Public Information Office, as well as Mr. Neve. And it, it's been, you know, very quick. I think as Noraida mentioned, usually a process like this takes anywhere from four to six months. I think we've accomplished a lot in three weeks. We were engaged and we've actually been meeting weekly. This is obviously an image that you've already seen, which is a Laredo Bond 2025 brand, Bond Election Day, May third. I'll talk a little bit about kind of our meetings. We've been having weekly meetings with all stakeholders and all departments have been involved. So all public information officers, for anyone that's representing one of the propositions, has been in these meetings and they've been extensive. We started with a SWOT analysis, which obviously identifies strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. And ourselves, as far as our team, we want it to be, absorb all the information as best as we could. Obviously, it's a lot of information and a lot of information to put out. One thing that Noraida pointed on is that you don't want to overwhelm the public with something that they don't even understand. This hasn't happened in thirty-two years. So educating the public is key, right? So the first thing we did as part of our plan after meeting with all the PIOs is we started, there's a bond. You know, that's the first piece of information. And then there's tidbits of information that's going out strategically. It's not just without a plan. It's all being done very strategically. So there's four phases to the campaign. The first part obviously is a research and planning, which is what we did really the first week that we were engaged, which included our SWOT analysis. Then there's a creative and content development component, which again, that process typically will take anywhere from four to six months. We distributed some copies of the SWOT, first of all, so you all could look at that. And then also information regarding our creative brief, which basically tells us what direction we're going to go in. Now, we are not the subject matter experts. The city of Laredo management team is. Noraida and all those PIOs for each one of those departments that represent one of the propositions, they are the subject matter experts. We are there to help them strategically communicate that message to the public, very factual based. And that's one of the challenges that we had. We worked closely with the legal department because there's only so many things that we could and could not say, right? So that already was a challenge, but nevertheless, you have a copy of the creative brief that talks about that. And then of course, the engagement and campaign launch, which really started last week with the first piece of information that went out. And then of course, mobilization. So that's really kind of where we are right now, between the engagement and mobilization phase, where we're starting to roll out the informational sessions, the town halls, we're trying not to call them town halls, to try and get more people involved and get them excited about exactly what's going on. So obviously there's objectives that we've put together, together with our stakeholders. And you have copies of that strategy on your bond election marketing strategy piece, which is this one here that we distributed. I'm not going to go through all of them, but we developed key insights as well as key messaging that is going to be consistent. So the idea is that everybody's singing off the same sheet of music. The city is delivering a very consistent message based on facts, not based on rumors, not based on hearsay, not based on so-called social media influencers. It's all based on facts, based from all the information that we gathered from all our research, all our meetings and the results of the SWOT analysis. And then of course, the campaign strategies. How are we going to roll out this advertising campaign, right? And so therefore comes the creative brief, which all of you have a copy of. Creative approach, we developed brand personality for the Bond 2025, which you've seen. And Bak, my business partner, will come up to show you some of those elements of the campaign that represent all of the propositions. Obviously, Laredo Bond 2025 is the official title. There's a new URL, which is laredobond2025.com. It's embedded and has already been on the city website. It's beginning to change now based on the elements of the campaign. So the overall look and feel of that domain, once you click on there, it's part of the city website, but it's going to look and feel like the campaign, the colors, the personality, and all of the detailed information on every proposition is there. There's only so much we can put on a five-by-five card, right? So if people are really interested and they really want to know, then they can go online and they can read all of that information. By the way, everything is being done in English and in Spanish. We developed a brand logo, which you've seen, and then of course, the visual identity for the campaign. In terms of our campaign strategies, our audience education is where we started, what is a bond? And we're continuing to communicate that digitally. We're also doing it on video, both in English and in Spanish, because again, it hasn't been done in thirty-two years. People are not aware of even what a bond is. There's a feel-good campaign, you know, are we being progressive and competitive as other cities are? We continuously get compared, right, to other markets. It happens all the time. Interesting, really quick story, but while on our DC trip, I stayed behind because I serve on the Board of the American Advertising Federation. And there was people there from municipalities all over the country who are also currently undergoing bond campaigns. And talked about the very same thing, right? It's about how are we progressing our city? How do we feel good about our cities? We always think that the grass is greener on the other side, but we're not ever willing to sacrifice certain things, certain amenities, whatever it may be, so that we can move forward, right? So that's part of the feel-good campaign. The proposition breakdown's important. People need to know where the dollars are going. That's the buy the numbers breakdown and you'll start seeing that in everything that we distribute. And then of course, the grassroots advocacy, we're working closely with Noraida and the communications team. The one thing and the first thing that they've done kind of by default has been our breakfast with the mayor, which was last week, partnering with Laredo Chamber of Commerce. So the mayor was there and there was also a representative from each one of the departments that have a stake in this bond referendum. So the mayor was there and there was also a representative from each one of the departments that have a stake in this bond referendum. So they were able to talk one-on-one with CEOs, local leaders of our private business community, which I think went well. That was really the first part of our grassroots advocacy. Our informational session, which is coming up tomorrow, will be part of that as well. In terms of campaign outlets, Noraida mentioned it to you. Traditional media is being utilized. We're really focusing a lot on digital outreach because it's cost-effective and it's easy to reach out to people via digital. Printed collateral, you've seen one piece of it so far. And then of course, continuous public relations and grassroots efforts. And so I will let Bakwa come up and talk a little bit about the visuals and the campaign brand.
Mayor Potente, in casa, Francisco Marritos, I'm creative director and partner for PMDG. So I heard so many words, budget and numbers, and my mind was kind of like, you know, going all over, but this is the creative end. This is a fun part. This part was about how do we interpret the proposition, you know, how do, how do we capture and how do we craft this message? We're very limited in messaging because we really can't say much. I mean, it just has to be straightforward. So we used a lot of visuals and if you can see, I'm going to break down this really quick. Is you can see the four propositions in this logo. You know, you see the buildings, you see the services. And we also wanted to communicate with color. I know color sometimes it's like the last thing that we think about. But color also communicates a lot. So we wanted to keep it fun, alive, you know, and 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 just a very positive thing. Do I go down here? And so then we created four icons to represent the four propositions individually. Even though it's going to be, it's a big bond, but you're you're voting on them separately. So we have the safety, we have public, we have the street improvement and senior housing. And again, the same color palette. And then we combined the icons with the logo. Again, just to really, really branded and communicate those live colors that it's about progress, it's about positivity. Then you've seen this piece that we already printed. Now it breaks it down into what what proposition is, how much money. Very simple, consistent, consistent on the message. This is an ad that we did for, this is our first ad that we did explaining what the bond is and how we break it down. These are invites for tomorrow, Thursday and April 1st Town Hall meeting. So again, we're trying to really keep it consistent and alive with the visuals.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Are you going to put a QR code or a website or something that they can reference on the?
Yes.
Is it on there?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't see.
The website is on there, the QR code we we haven't included yet. We just wanted to make sure that the new URL was up and running. It is now, so that's the plan.
Awesome.
Yeah, so this is a new website, the the visit, uh, visit Laredo Bond or Laredo Bond 2025.com.
Thank you.
And these are electronic billboards. You're going to see them throughout the city. We have about maybe six of them right now circulating and they started this weekend. And then this is a simple video that we did for for social media. And I'm going to play it. And it's it's really about what the bond is. So that's that's one of the video of many that we'll be producing as we go along. It's another one. So as we, as we move along, we're going to be producing more videos, more information, more printed materials. I think we have on schedule, I'm not mistaken, a direct mail piece that we're working on. And we have a lot of social media activity that we're going to be rolling out. And so this is just the first part of it.
Councilmember.
Sorry, you know, Mr. Marientos, the editing on those infographics, will they be corrected?
Yes. Yes. So this is pretty much the entire package that we have. And so as we move along, we'll be adding or correcting or revising and modifying. Kind of getting the news out there, you know, getting the information. And if there's more questions, depending tomorrow also on the on the town hall. What questions they have, we might put out information on answering those questions through social media, through any other communications.
Councilmember.
Thank you. And thank you guys. And interestingly, tomorrow your town hall at the library. Actually, the last time the city held a bond election that passed, that was in nineteen ninety-three. And one of the propositions on there was that library that you're going to be in tomorrow.
Yeah.
So it might be worth, you know, making that connection for people. As a, you know, history, you know, reminder.
That's a good one.
As a, you know, so it's, I don't know if that was on purpose or that was a coincidence, but that is noteworthy. And the other, a couple of the other items, well, the West Laredo Overpass was another one. Then there were some fire stations and some other things. So it might be historically relevant if you include that type of thing. So so because people may not believe that it's been thirty two years since the city has done that. Like, ah, they're just saying that. But if you actually show them something that they're aware of, you know, that might be, that might just explain.
I just want to mention just on that, it's interesting you say that because with a lot of the other municipalities that I've spoken to over the last couple of months regarding bonds at their cities. Is that's one thing that they never do a really good job of is post referendum. Once the bonds pass, they don't go out and remind people, look at what we did with the money. Here it is. We promised you, now here it is. And to your point, you know, we may not have done, and I say we as a community, we may not have done a very good job about reminding people about the fact that we got a new library. And way back then, a new police department station that now has been outgrown, right? I mean, it's been almost thirty-five years, right? So that's just a very good point that we need to remember that, that after this bond, if it does pass. We need to ensure that that we go out and we remind people, look at what we've done. Here are the results of your vote.
One more question, John.
Yes.
Are you going to do like individual videos for each proposition?
Yes, and I just wanted to address Councilmember Sierra Ross. That second video with that edit has not been released yet. So yes, we're correcting that.
This is question for Mr. What? Mr. Zone. Can we attend? Can we be involved? But I know we can, but.
How far can, you know, that's not to get in and those problems of saying that we do support, we don't support. Or whatever the case is between our colleges, maybe like if I want to be there. And you know, most of the constituents or the people is there, they see us, they're going to be like, oh, you answer me, why do you want this? Or why did you vote for this? So how far can we go so we won't be getting in trouble?
That's a good question. I thank you for that. So the the line is, we cannot electioneer, right? We can't go and spend city resources or or in your position as an official council members support this. Just be honest with you, that's that's the side of work we're concerned about, right? Because normally in an election, you have voting for or against, so there'd be for and against. But here, the actionable side is if we're advocating for passage of this bond, then that's what could get us in trouble, right? So if you show up, then most, I would say you have to be a bit more cautious because at this presentation. And you're there as a council member, you're going to be representing the city, right? So if you can't say, well, I personally think we should have, you know, yes to this, no to that. Fair enough, right? So if you're going to show up, I believe you need to stay focused on the facts, right? Answer questions about the facts. If they ask for your personal opinion, say you can talk to them offline. That's the clearest line.
Just to clear up, you know, for the record, so just in case the public goes out there and say, well, you didn't want to answer this question. That we don't want to answer that, we can't answer that question.
Say, I'm here, I'm here on behalf of the city, we're presenting facts and information, I talk to you offline.
As zone, just to clarify. I do think that that's important because, I mean, we've had this conversation before as far as taking off your council member hat and putting on your private citizen hat. And, you know, it's kind of difficult because people see us and they recognize us as council member. Unless they've known us personally, you know, before this role or whatever. So I do think it is dangerous for us to speak about our personal opinions on platforms that are in our capacity. Because we've gained an audience based on our position. We have friends on social media based on our personal and we have people that follow us based on our title. And then we're speaking to them through our title, but we're telling them that it's our personal opinion. I think that's very dangerous. We have people on council that are doing that. And I don't, I don't think that that's. I I'm, I understand that there's a legal line and everything. If we show up to a town hall and we sit in the audience and we say, well, we're just here as private citizens. I also don't think that that's going to fly either. If we go to a meeting and we show up, we're showing up as our official capacity. We have to speak in that official capacity. And my, I don't know, is that the legal interpretation?
Yes, that's just exactly what I just said to Councilmember Ron Hill. I appreciate you clarifying that. That's that when you show up to this town meeting, it's hard to discern, to separate yourself as a private citizen. So that's what I mean by there, you should stick to the facts, information only if you want to speak about your personal feelings. That should be spoken to offline, outside of that.
A councilmember.
No, mine was, when does our official capacity finish?
I just, I mean, we're talking about it. We're never a private citizen. Where, when does it finish? Because you're putting us in a, between a hard, a hard, a rock and a hard place. It's like we, anywhere we go, we took an oath. And it doesn't matter what it is, we're still the same people. And we are elected officials and we represent the city. So we hold ourselves to the standard, that standard. Where does it finish or what time does it end? Do you have, do we have a time after five o'clock? You know, I just, no, I'm not trying to be, you know, but I'm just trying to make sense because I might be at a, at a, at a place. And they might ask me, and I may be with my family and they might ask me, hey, Mr. Ron Hill, this is what was going on, what do you think about this? And they may take that context out of, you know, take it out of context. And then I'm in trouble. So that's why I'm trying to figure out where does it finish or where's the line?
So let me answer fully. I appreciate this. You know, me, I'm nerdy about this stuff. I want to show you exactly where that line is, right? So you're always council members, right? You serve twenty-four hours a day, right? However, you do have your personal rights, your first member rights. So I'm just saying, if you want to be totally cautious, then always speak on behalf of the city, right? But you're you're smart people, you're, you care about this community, you may want to speak your mind. You just have to make sure that it's very clear that you're only speaking as a private citizen, not as a council member.
Well, I'm sorry, Mr. Zone, I'm not trying to be a person that's on it. It's that, when is that?
How's it clear?
Well, how's it, how can you clear it up for us and say we are able to speak and say and express our opinion? Even if it's in favor or against it, it doesn't matter. When do we, where's that line? When is it? So can you get a, can you get us an answer for that? Because, you know.
My answer is it has to be clear in the recipient's mind and clear. So that objectively, if you get sued for it, you get grieved for it. People who who can look at it and say, yes, you're speaking as a private citizen. If you can get across that threshold, then you're clear. But unless you want me to be right next to you and tell you, yes, you can do this and that, I'll do that. But as smart people, you can.
But if anything, Mr. Zone, it would be nice if you would be in these town hall meetings at the same time. So if we're not, if, if, let's say something comes up, you're there to protect us. At the same time, saying not only us as as individual, as a city councilman. But I know as our employers, our staff, that can not, not, they can't speak on it either. And they can't say they're not in favor of it or against it, but they're stating their facts. And that in that way, you'll be there in case a person comes up and say, hey, well, you don't want to answer my question. Which we always have. We always have, even not even in public comments. And our, and our, and even our platforms and stuff on our, what you call it, on our Facebooks. The we, social media, there you go. Social media, they they respond to us and they tell us, you know, you don't want to tell us what their money, where their money is going to. Or because why is it that you want it, Mr. Ron Hill? Why is it that you want it? Mr. Zone, I'm just using you as an opinion, right? But that's why I'm saying, can you be there at every town, and yeah, we're going to have two town hall, town hall meetings within this week. It would be nice if you would be there. It would be good to be, you'll be there, you'll be there, say, you know what, he can't answer that. This is, this is the reason why, because you're the lawyer of the city.
Well, and Zone, just to piggyback, if people are going to ask us, do, are you in favor of this? Do, should we vote for this? How should we vote for this? Like, they are going to ask us that. They, that's just how it's going to happen. And so are they asking us in our professional capacity and our personal capacity? I think that if you're amongst friends or in a private setting, maybe you can give your personal opinion. But if we're out in the public or in the public eye, what we're saying, if we're telling them yes or no. That I don't want to get caught in some kind of problem.
And and just to add to that, it's that we're at, we're in a public, we're not a public city. But at that moment, we're representing the city. You know, we're having these town hall meetings for the community to go out there and have the conversation. To ask any question, as they're good or bad, whatever question they want to do, they have that question.
As a body, you all voted for these propositions. So you're asking the council, I mean, the citizens to to vote for this. So as a body, that's, that's what you're, you're pushing forward, right? But as, but as far as advocating, you know, for against, by all means. Yeah, I'm a city attorney for twenty-four hours a day. So you you want me to show up, I will show up.
Councilmember Melissa Segaro.
So trying to find that line. If we run separate accounts, if we have a personal social media account versus a leaning towards city business, personal account, uh, account. It's all personal, right? Social media is all personal. But if we're defining ourselves with our personal social media versus our out in the public, city council, social media. That seems to be a division. That's the line, right? So on the personal account, we would be able to be, not that I want to cross it by saying rah rah rah. But talk a little bit more about what the implications are. And the other question I has, if, and I believe Councilwoman Ron Hill brought this up. Are we able to say, I can see the need for these bonds? You're not saying how you're going to vote. But I mean, we are elected officials and when you're talking about people coming in looking to us for guidance. Like you said, we're the ones who put them up, we're the ones who propose them. Then are we able to express ourselves in that way?
If you're.
Let him answer and then.
I'll answer real quickly. So the first part, if if it's a city account, then then it's a, it's a public forum. So you can't speak your private concern. If it's your personal account, yes, you pay for it all. That's a private account. However, even in a private account, if you're publishing things in your official capacity, that could become a public forum. I I've talked to some of you about this over the past couple of years. So you have to be careful there. So it's just because it's your, your own private account, doesn't necessarily mean it's always going to be private. So you have to keep those two separate if you want to keep that distinction. The the other question about.
Raising the child.
Raising it, again, if in your official capacity, we cannot electioneer. That's the bright line. So you can't say that we really need the Hamilton, we really need this police station. You cannot say those things, unfortunately, yes.
Oh, Councilmember.
No, I just wanted to talk about it because I think a lot of this is directed at me. But I would like to share that in others, with other cities, other entities, like government entities. There you have your personal public page that is, that is identified as such. And and there, there are other, there are public pages that are run by federal, state, city staff. And we don't have that. We don't, all of, every social media account that we have is is personal. Um whether it be personal, private or personal, public, but and and to the things that I have shared. There's, I don't see anywhere that I say vote for or against. I think that it's asking people to think critically. And just to think about what the impacts are gonna be and come up with the decision on their own, but at least think about it critically. There's, and I don't, I don't see where the harm is in 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 that. And I would even go as far to say is the city is running its own marketing campaign that's a feel-good campaign. How is that not meaning one way or the other?
Uh councilmember.
I was gonna speak to more more about the marketing part of that. I think a lot of it can be cleared up by by uh. Uh you know, I, it's the first time you told us, you know, that fine line. It's very clear to me. We just, we we cannot be the face of this bond election. We were the ones who voted for it to come forward, but we cannot be the ones who take it across the finish line. That's you all. Uh personally, I'd love to go to those meetings. I did it before. Uh but I can understand when people come up to you and ask you for your opinion. Uh but it's very difficult to try and sell it. And here I am, I'm gonna cross that line. Let let's just let the facts speak for themselves and you guys, more than anything, are the ones that do it. But I do want this, though. If if I can, uh if if I'm gonna let the facts speak for themselves. Uh and make a a decision because of it, rightfully so, rightfully said. Then our marketing strategy has to be geared towards that because if they're asking questions up here. Then our marketing has to be, you know, like you you started it off by the introduction process, which I loved, okay? Then now that you introduced it for a week or two, then here comes the facts. So that we can, I mean, totally zero in with something that comes together with the town hall meetings. And then town hall meetings are gonna be totally fact-based. And so I'm wondering if we, as 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 a group, us, we have a scripted uh town hall. That is gonna be geared towards um speaking to somebody like me. Are you gonna be able to dumb it down for me, you know, and I would hope, because sometimes these things can be. Um uh quite daunting because a lot of people don't, I mean, really, the the greatest example of that is is the the simple question. Do we really know where that money is gonna go to, okay? So if you can answer that, I'm just, I'm speaking as a council member, saying that if you are going to be selling this product. Or you're gonna be introducing this product to them, well, the, by not insulting the process. Is to really educate everybody out there with what it is, so. If and and in educating, I don't mean bombarding them with information or needless information that's out there. But really zeroing in on a guy like me and explain it to me like I'm a fourth grader. And I think that you're, the people will get it, whether they like it or not. And that's it. When you put it in those terms, I think that's very easy to make a decision whether, no, I'm not for it or I'm for it. And so that's my two cents worth on that. That uh I'd love to go to those meetings, but I I can understand how people can misinterpret me. Uh you're going out there as as electioneering and you know, but that's part of the process of doing this.
I just wanna clarify real quick on on answering your question, Councilmember Garcia, and that's exactly. Uh yes, Nora Danagron, Public Information Manager, for the record. That is exactly what we are going to be doing, especially at the informational sessions as well. Um we are trying to put this information that people can understand, it can digest it like you're mentioning it. Um and so, yes, it'll, that's why we want it for it to be very um. Interactive with the community because we're going to be able to uh on one-on-one kinda explain. Or you know, if they have any other questions, that we're able to explain those. And so each both of each department of each proposition will be able to highlight that and we will be explaining it in very um. I guess, very, yeah, exactly.
I have a question, Zone, about that. Um you said right now that we can't talk about. What did you just say right now? Can you repeat that? Uh you said that we can't talk about the consequences of not doing it? Or or we can't talk, you said something.
Trying to, yeah, think of that to answer uh Councilmember Garcia's question along with yours. Uh my first time is that if if you, if I'm talking to a fourth grader. I I would say keep it fact-specific, information-specific, like if, here's our population. These are how many fire stations we generally have, this is how many, this is the timeframe when we uh turn over vehicles, those are facts. But when you say it's it's good to have this, or it's bad to have this, you you put opinion into it, that's electioneering. I don't know if that helps.
Any other questions about that, Councilmember?
I I do, yes. So um I think back to, referring back to uh Councilmember Garcia's. Proposal about asking about what happens if it fails. Are, we have, and I know that was the part I guess you're getting to, but we do have very specific things that can happen. If this proposal would fail. Are we allowed to discuss those?
Again, uh that's a good question. The line, I I believe it could, that might be helpful. There's, if it's fact-specific, if it fails, then we we would be short in funding. Those are facts. You say if it fails, Laredo is going down, that's an opinion, right?
No, I guess talking about the alternatives, how to find that money to do those projects.
If it's fact-specific, it's it's.
The balance in this is that the 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 alternatives that I'm going to provide to you are not the only alternatives out there. These are just some. I think that was the challenge we had when I was putting this slide together to. Cuz the question was, well, what are we gonna do if it doesn't work, right? Uh the challenge I have is that I don't want it to come across saying, well, if you don't do this, then we're gonna do this. Because that's not what the nature of this thing is. We have all the all the different structures. We could do nothing. We could, we could cut, if you, if any of those propositions are still important to us, we can find room within our own budget, which means we're gonna drop programs. In order to make room for all of that stuff.
Can you say that, Ms. Zone? Can you say you were gonna drop programs?
You don't want it to stop just at dropping programs because there are all these alternatives out there, right? I mean, to do nothing, that's why I said that one first, is that we'll just, we'll, uh there are cities out there, or actually schools, I guess, more often than not. When they have a failed bond referendum, they've actually just repackaged it and they go back out and ask again if it's something that's really, really important. We have all those different alternatives out there. The ones ones I'm gonna share with you are is I wanna make sure you understand the distinction between the four propositions as well. Within that structure, but uh I never wanted to come across as, hey, if you don't do it this way, then we're gonna do it this way. This is the conversation I'll have with you all, though, is that because if any of this stuff is very important, then we're gonna find a way to make it work, right? One way or another.
Um, Miss, um, Mr. Ne, I just wanna comment that um and mark in terms of, I guess, in terms of marketing. Um for people to um understand also. Uh we're not gonna put the financial, I think, as much into the marketing, but we did have a motion to have a financial workshop for the public. Is is that gonna be scheduled? I know you're having information.
Part of, part of the stuff that you heard tonight will actually actually be repackaged for for these these town, these town halls. And informational meetings as well, too. Uh what we wanna do is make sure that when we are talking in these in these informational sessions, that we're actually reaching them. We don't wanna inundate them with information that's not important to them, so. But the idea of that, that's the reason that we went into so much detail in the in the early part of the conversation. So that when we do sit down with the public, we can at least say, here's the information we shared with the council. Here's how, here's how we're gonna utilize that information. So they, it will, there will be a part of that within those conversations.
Well, is is and another question is, um since, I think most people can understand the concept of like. You know, getting a loan for home improvements, you know, versus saving the money up and waiting so you can pay it all cash. Um is there a way to translate that in terms of, that's basically what we're doing, is we're asking them for the permission. To go out for a loan so we can bring these things to them sooner than later because we need them now or because they're things that we've needed. And we're gonna pay it back over time, like a loan, because most people understand that. They wanna build a pool, they wanna build a blah blah blah, they wanna make improvements to their home. Most people take out a loan so they can get those things instead of saving up over the years, right? So um is it okay to communicate, like, is it okay for us to just make it very simple for them to understand? Cuz you, the word bond, you know, but you talk about.
But going going with your, I and and maybe we didn't do a good enough job of explaining all of the steps in that. That is exactly what we're talking about doing, is putting that information out there in the layman terms, fourth grade terms, right?
If I may, I can, I can address that really quickly. So fir- first of all, and I'm not speaking. Uh Avi Barada with TMDG Marketing Communications. Uh I'm not speaking uh regarding anything having to do with legal, right? Obviously, you've got your legal department. But I can tell you that the way that the campaign was created and in marketing, we we do write copy and content at a fourth grade reading level. It's a way a newspaper is written because it's for everybody to understand, right? So we have to simplify the message because it's so comprehensive that no one's ever gonna understand it. But going back to what he's talking about, facts, everything that's being uh communicated is fact-based, right? So the little cards that you have, if, you know, obviously, it's your choice whether you attend these town hall meetings or not. But if you were to go and somebody was to ask you for your opinion, you can say, well, these are the facts. And this is what we're looking for and it's four propositions and this is exactly what they're for. You know, I encourage them and say, I would encourage you to go to LaredoBond2025.com where all the information is there in detail. And then if they have any additional questions, they can shoot a message or an email, an instant message through that website, right? But if you sit there and try to explain it, they're they're never gonna get it, right? Um at the end of the day, in terms of, you know, your question, right, uh about uh simplifying the message and how the the finance uh aspect of it. Absolutely, there's gonna be comparisons, so part of the strategy also is to release uh information regarding the facts versus myths. You know, what is the myth? The myth is that this is gonna impact my taxes by whatever it is. Well, that's already being communicated on social media. It's not, it's not factual. It's just hearsay. You know, the council, you know, uh gave themselves a raise. That's just somebody's opinion, right? So that's always gonna happen. It's gonna be continuous. So all we need to do is continuously be focused on giving them the correct information over and over and over again. You know, consistency is king, right? These are the facts, these are the numbers, this is how it's gonna be impacted. And you know, to your point, in terms of the finance, we're not gonna get super comprehensive because they'll never understand it. But there will be an opportunity and I think that the best people to deliver that message also are are our staff. When we were at the breakfast with the mayor, I can tell you that probably eighty percent of the people that were in that room. Were, they were not sure what to expect. But when that hour and a half session ended, which by the way, was gonna be thirty minutes, it was an hour and a half. Uh the way that, you know, they presented and they spoke and they explained, it costs so much to repair so many miles of street. If we wait now, it's gonna cost us this much more. Everybody understood and every question was answered one-on-one. At the end of that presentation, people were coming up to city staff and say, said, I get it now. You know, I wasn't sure what the bond was for, but you explained it. And so there's always gonna be that confusion. I will also um, you know, alert you that, you know. When you were talking about opinions and public and private, everything is public. The minute that you post anything, whether it be on, you know, X or on Instagram, regardless of what account it is, it's public. You're posting it for anybody to see. Somebody can walk away with it, right? So whether it's an opinion or not an opinion, it's public at the end of the day, right? That's the way social media is. The 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 key here is that if you are, you know, going out there and believing everything that you see. That people are writing and commenting on, we're never gonna be effective. It's it's about continuously, just like he said, the facts. Continuously repeating the facts and if they say, oh, you're wrong, you're lying, you know, this money's gonna go to your pockets because you're greedy. Just because that's somebody's opinion and if we're worried about that, we're never gonna be able to move forward, right? We just repeat the facts. You know, this is what the bond is for. It hasn't happened in thirty-two years. Other cities do it. That's how they get things accomplished. Keep moving forward, right? But it's also in my, just from our experience over the years. Social media is not the, that's not the, we shouldn't be looking at social media to decide whether or not this is effective or not. That that's one small voice at the end of the day and and we all know that, all of you know that. When you all ran for office, you know. If you let that social media consume you, it it'll drive you crazy and you'll never get anywhere. These bond campaigns are designed to deliver facts and to encourage people to make educated decisions. At the end of the day, the vote is in their hands. If they feel that they would like to see improvements, I used a personal example. Uh they brought up Dr. Chamberlain, who by the way, did a phenomenal job explaining why they needed those funds. You know, I I went back in the nineties, I worked at the City of Laredo Health Department. And back then, we we had no room. We were out of space and that was in nineteen ninety-six. So you can imagine all these years later, they still don't have the space, right? There was portable buildings in nineteen ninety-six where I had to be in my office because we didn't fit at the health department. And the way that he explained certain grants, right? Grants are willing to come in and fund us, but we need so many. You know, so much square footage of space for each one of those programs. People don't understand that. Do we have the time to to educate people and tell them? Probably not, but we can definitely go out in a grassroots fashion. We have the informational sessions. We have a little bit more time. We can explain why these funds are necessary for every proposition, not just the health department. I used it as an example because he did a phenomenal job of explaining and breaking it down. And I I think hearing from the experts has made a world of difference. It made a world of difference for me. And I think the first presentation that we had was was good, but at the end of the day, and and just like Zone has said, stick to the facts. And and I I appreciate all of you being so cautious of this and not just going out there and saying, this is my opinion, this is what I'm gonna do. And and asking the question over and over again because i- it's critical. You're absolutely right. Uh it it's like a celebrity. A celebrity can have their own personal, you know, social media account and they can have their official celebrity media account. Well, regardless, they're still a celebrity in every likeness, right? That's never gonna go away. So you know, if Councilmember Sigarro, if you approach that HEB, what do you do? They put you up against a wall, which I'm sure happens, right? And what do you think about this? How do you respond? And the best way to respond is take out one of those little cards and say, here's some information so you can learn more about it and go to the website. And it's great seeing you, you know, versus giving them an opportunity to wait for your opinion, right? And so that may be the best way to do it because, you know, o- otherwise, we're all gonna drive ourselves crazy. We're gonna keep asking. You know, you all are elected officials, you voted for this, you you can't technically go out there and electioneer like he's saying, but you can go out there and deliver the facts.
Councilmember.
Yes, thank you. And I just, just to add to that, I do, I mean, I do believe that the effects of for or against this bond should be talked about. And what what are the adverse effects? What is the long-term effects? What, how is Eminem gonna affect? A- affects the the um our city and our financial um situation? Where where are we gonna be if, I mean, we're trying to raise bridge fees, we're raising, if this passes? I don't know where you're saying that it's raising taxes is not a fact. I mean, over the next couple of years, if this bond is approved. The bond will be sold and we will have to raise a per- a percentage, so I'm I'm not sure where you're saying that that's not.
Oh, I'm sorry that I misinterpreted that, but yes, indeed, uh Councilmember Sigarro. In our, in our, all the information that's going out, it does clarify that what that increase in taxes is gonna be. Uh and we got that information from the legal department and community development and all the experts have given us the exact number. And so we know it's gonna be a hundred thousand for, I think it's every hundred thousand dollars in in valuation, right, if I'm not mistaken? So if if you do the math, I mean, on a hundred thousand dollar property, which we know is is a low number, but you're looking approximately at about. Eight eight dollars and thirty-three cents a month that those taxes will increase, right? So the public needs to know that. Yes, taxes will be increased by eight dollars and thirty-three cents a month on every hundred thousand dollars in valuation, which is about twenty-seven cents a day. So yes, they need to know that and and we're telling them taxes are gonna be increased, but that's where I mentioned at the beginning of my presentation. What are we willing as a community to to do, right? The grass is greener on the other side. And and we've actually done the research and all the markets that have implemented bonds, taxes have increased, depending on the proposition, right? So either taxes don't increase, things stay the same, and this is what happens, right? But again, that's why we're being fact-based and and you're right, they need to hear both sides. But I think what uh if I'm not mistaken, Zone, what you're leading to is it shouldn't be elected officials saying that. It can be a third party that's talking about, look, these are the good reasons, these are the bad reasons, this, these are the pros and cons, right? But it shouldn't necessarily be the city and it shouldn't be elected officials.
But the city is doing a marketing campaign and a feel-good one at that.
Well, they're all facts. They're they're not telling them which way to vote. They're not saying vote for this or vote for that, yes.
Same thing. Nobody here up here is telling how anybody how to vote, just to to think.
I'll also, uh just to clarify, uh Zone, also, it's not just us, right? It's also city staff. Cannot, cannot, I mean, what, is, are you gonna provide like a fact sheet for? For staff, for us, so that, I mean, cuz I know that you all, you all can't even push for it either. So, you know, we're all, we're all saying why we need it, we're saying why we're doing it, why we did it, why we supported it. To put it on their, on their plate for them to, you know, say yes or no. But um none of us are allowed to really say, I think it would be helpful for us, for legal to provide us with some kind of.
We can, we can put that together and then at least give you some what-if scenarios that we think that, as to how to respond. Because uh I think and and Zone alluded to it a little bit with one of the the answers that. This council voted to put the bond referendum out to the people. These are the four items that they voted on that would go to the people, right? I mean, we haven't said, do this bond referendum or else. We, what we said was is that these are the four items that we determine. Based upon the information provided. based upon the information provided to us that we wanted you to consider. So we, we can put together kind of a what-if of, of how to, uh, how to, how to kind of stay in that balance. Uh, I will tell you that this campaign, even as short-lived as it is right now, has went through so many different adjustments about things that they wanted to add to it that would bring something else to it. We had to take it off because it, it came, it went too far over the, the line. Um, and that's why, that's why we have the, all the, all the marketing information right now is Laredo Bond referendum.
Ms. Nepp, um, councilmember Seagro has a comment and then I think it would be, I don't know if Ms., uh, before that, councilmember Seagro. Mr. Barada, did you have anything else you wanted to add or did, and does council have any questions for Mr. Barada specifically? It is? Okay, councilmember Seagro wants to.
Um, the information about the hundred thousand dollar, and, and this may actually be more, uh, answered by city staff, but that eight dollars and thirty-three cents per hundred thousand dollar property valuation, is that based on a five-year spread of this bond?
I'm, I'm not sure what the tenure of it is. That was just the information they gave us based on the valuation number.
So if it is factually accurate or we, we are able to say that it's eight dollars and thirty-three cents per one hundred thousand dollar property valuation? And, and maybe it's, it's a little wonky in that all those bonds aren't going to go out at the same time, understanding that, right? But, um, they aren't also going to go all out the next year. It's going to be that five-year span. Are we safe in saying that it's eight dollars and thirty-three cents per hundred thousand dollar valuation?
I mean, I mean, putting together the information specifically, it's safe to say.
That, because I think that's very important. When you talk about fact-based and you talk about the misinformation, people are putting out wild numbers about what it's going to cost. But at the same time, we should be putting out the accurate number based on this five-year projection and understanding there's going to be a little give and take in that. But that is something that is worth knowing and, and I think that's easy to talk about, at least for me.
Yes. Any other comments for the marketing? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Barada for your work. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Nepp, do you want to wrap it up for us?
Uh, let me wrap it up.
Ten, ten minutes?
Really quickly on the bond referendum alternatives, yeah. Five, my five minutes are left?
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes. Oh, woo! All right, I'll, I'll digress a little. No. Uh, so there, there are a lot of different alternative funding approaches that, that will, that could happen if we don't do this. I think the challenge we have with this bond referendum is so much of it was built on fixing something that's been broken. And there are, there are some new pieces in there, but we can do tax rate adjustments, service reductions, reallocation of current funds. And, and then we can get very creative within the structure. And so I was going to share a little bit of that. One of the key alternatives is of course, is that, and this goes back to the earlier conversation where I said, remember the capacity conversation based upon our current tax rate? We have capacity within our current tax rate. We are actually taxing our people less than what we have the value that we can tax them at. That is something that everybody kind of misses a little bit. There's, there, and so we actually have the ability to bring that tax rate up to that amount without public action. The, the nature of where the council has been is that we want to, we wanted to keep the taxes going the other direction and that's why we're in that, in that status. So when you look at that graph that had the, uh, that had the tax rate and, and you saw it always dropping down on that, that is what the capacity is. We can go back to the FY twenty-one, twenty-two and bring the tax rates back up. Just so you know, regardless of the bond referendum, uh, you know, if it, if it, if it goes through, it's going to cost whatever it's going to go through. If it doesn't go through, it's still going to cost if we're trying to do the work. There is no, there is no free way out of this thing. It's, it's, somebody's going, somebody has to pay for whatever it is. But there is, there is capacity within our structure.
So that cap, uh, uh, excuse me, the capacity that you're talking about, what we were, what we have been told during those tax rate workshops is that we are restricted in the amount that we can actually raise that rate. It's the cap of three point five percent. So where is the capacity that you're talking about?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. So the INS side, which is the interest and sinking side. So we can go out and do capital and bring that number up. We're capped on the M and O side of the three and a half percent.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, and this, this was the conversation. So, yeah, my questions and my conversation on the weekend as well too was, we have the ability to go up there. What is so nice about the bond referendum is that we went out to the public and said, can you support this? We just didn't enact any, any kind of adjustments to their tax rate. Like I would argue that has been done in the past. We said, can, can the public support this? So we're, we're trying to meet the whole aspect of, of meeting with that. But this is the INS side. This is the interest and sinking side.
Yeah. Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Just, that's something that I learned when I went down the rabbit hole of this. Is that like San Antonio, for example, when they go to the bond every five years, they actually don't have to do it. They could do it without going to the people. They do it for the, the political aspect of saying, okay, if someone says, hey, why did you, why did you do this? The, the response from the city can be, well, the people voted for it. They don't have to because they're, they're, again, like you said, INS you can actually increase. It's the M and O that you need the permission, uh, for, so.
So now the, the other side of this thing, and this is on that last little item over there. Out of the four propositions, we can only increase the INS for the public safety and the streets. We can't do it for the public health. We can't do it for the Hamilton Hotel. So the INS is one option that we could actually do that if, depending on how the conversation goes, we can fall into the INS. This is the one called pay-as-you-go strategy. This means that essentially you're going to live within your means. That means we're going to do fewer projects and we're going to do, it'll take longer to get a project done because it's based upon how much money we have coming in. And so that, I, I would, I, I don't, wouldn't recommend that because we've already talked a little bit about that. It's just like a home loan. We go out and we leverage our, our revenue to get something done faster and that's what these, all these projects are. So paying you, pay as you go. If you, if you're adverse to any type of debt, this works well, but just know that it tightens every, you can't get things done as quickly as you, you have to. The service and program reductions, uh, just, just stating within this thing to begin with, uh, we talked a little bit about the waivers tonight. I would argue that any outside of agency funding, any incentive programs where we're not taking care of our primary services, those should be the ones that we look at first because it has no effect to our core services. And that's not outside of the conversation that we did have going, is our core service doing what we're supposed to do? But I'm saying that those funds that are going out to support these other things, that should be the first thing we look at. And then, then it's a prioritization within our core services as to protecting those things that are the most important. Special assessments and fees, that's the other part that we have. We can go out and we can initiate special assessment districts, uh, chapter three seventy-two. We can do street improvements, local in- infrastructure projects. I would recommend that we have a conversation later on anyway about street maintenance fee. Uh, some of our sister cities do, do it already and they actually charge on the utility bill a cost of the street maintenance side where everybody is paying into it. It makes a lot of sense to me in order to do that. Um, I've also, I've also recommended at one time or another that streets are a utility essentially. They're an infrastructure system. Let's do an enterprise fund and put the entire street department under an enterprise fund and, and charge everybody accordingly based upon whatever that front footage or whatever it is. Those are the ideas that we have with the special assessments. Public improvement districts. So we've talked a little bit about PIDs in the past and everything. But you know, PIDs can actually, uh, be established over any type of an area out there. It can fund parks, recreation centers, localized improvements. It does require property owner consent, fifty percent of the value or the area, and the assessments have to be tied to the direct benefits. So very similar to the hotel occupancy tax as well too. There is very specific uses. We have to do this. Public improvement districts are a good thing. The people have to say, yes, we want to do that though. I mean, the owners of the, of, in that area. But this is a way that we can kind of get into that. Of course, always with, uh, grants and public-private partnerships, we can go farther within to those. And, um, and then the alternative approach system, uh, public safety, this is just a layout of those four propositions that we have out there. These are the alternative strategies that kind of matched up with what I talked about. So these are opportunities that we can kind of go into and try to figure out what, what else, what else we can do if there, any of that's still important. I will tell you that within our budget cycle, and I'm going to use the police department building as an example. If we do not build a brand-new building and move them into a brand-new building, I have to fix the old building. So that'll, that'll have an impact of, uh, of however much we have to put in there, whether the two dollars per square foot's enough or whether we need more, we'll, we'll do it, we'll go out and do an assessment of that building and I have to fix that building. So that's going to have to be looked at, uh, within that structure. Uh, the streets, I would always argue, we, we need to put more money into our streets. Uh, the Hamilton Hotel, I think we, we really have to find a way to, uh, make that Hamilton Hotel. One of the questions that got asked at the, uh, at the chamber breakfast for the.
Yeah, can I, can I ask you just one, one thing on the, on the police department deal? Um, yes, uh, we can always fix that building, but I mean, part, part of the deal that has to be truly inserted in there is that that building is never going to be ours because we don't own the land, own the land, so.
Yeah. And just so you know, with the police department building, the long-term, the most, uh, beneficial long-term is to build the new building because it will be designed to what they are doing today. We're converting an old building and trying to fit everything into this old building the way it's structured. And so the most cost-effective method is to build a new building rather than to renovate the other one. The renovation though gets us through the emergency need, but if you look at the long-term benefits, it is, the, the corrective is to build a building that does what they want it to do, they need it to do. And so, um.
You were saying something about the chamber or something?
Yeah, with, with the chamber breakfast and I don't remember now, so. Well, okay, yeah, the Hamilton, thank you. That is it with the, with the mayor, breakfast of the mayor. The question was asked whether or not that will, will the Hamilton actually, um, can it reach a rate-neutral system? And our conversation was, yes, it can get to a rate-neutral system. So the, the rates, we'll have to raise the rates of the people that are living there. We have to improve the downstairs where we have the commercials so that there's a value to that. And so this, this improvement of the building will actually, if everything worked the way it is supposed to, it'll be the last time that we have to use public dollars to salvage it. I mean, we have a HUD loan out there and it's still at about five and a half million dollars. We're going to go back out there and actually, we're ac- actually asking to borrow more to bring that building up to a usable condition. But then the rates and everything should actually sustain it. That's the, that's the reason why we're, and that came out of that breakfast this morning, so, or that, the other morning. All right. So this is the specifics, alternatives, uh, won't go into that much. Long-term recommendation is that we will have those, all those conversations at that point in time. I, I think there are a lot of different ways to get there. Uh, final, final message on this, postponing it does not eliminate the need. It only increases the cost and risk to service this, to grid agents. We've got to do something and I think that's why we're doing what we're doing. We are recommending, uh, proactive, transparent engagement with the community to highlight the long-term benefits of any bond referendum and the trade-offs required if alternative measures are pursued. Some of this goes back to hindsight being twenty-twenty as well too. If we would have been tackling this stuff different twenty years ago, we may not have been in the boat that we are now. I, what I really appreciate about every one of you, regardless of where your opinions are on anything, you're not willing to kick the can down. This bond referendum isn't saying that this is the only option out there. This is the most, this is the best option that we had when you, when you considered it today. And, and so I think that's the nature of that is. And so the people that are for or against it, it, they're, they're going to say what they are going to say. I think our campaign is to make sure that we keep our information correct. Just the last thing, really quickly, you see it in here, we're going to do an efficiency study. This came out of my conversation with you all in the individual meetings in February that we're going out there, we're, we're asking our public to help support us a little bit more with that. I would argue that there is no difference between the city and the public. We are one people. The city operates for the public, so please, uh, keep that in mind when we're all talking about this. We just all have different ways of getting there. But the, the whole concept of this is going through each one of our, uh, departments, our systems, our divisions with a fine-tooth comb saying, is it still meeting what we want it to meet? And, uh, and I, I would argue you've been doing that to a certain level every time, time we have a budget conversation. I think we've adjusted. Uh, I think this is just going to put it into it. That's, this is just the purpose of the study. Uh, this type of a study will take nine to sixteen months to get done. So just so you know, I can't get it done in time for the bond referendum question. But this will be very good information as we build every budget after this one. So.
Thank you, Mr. Nepp.
Mayor Protem, yeah, city council, I appreciate you, uh, everything for you.
I'm going to stop you there. Does anybody on council have any final questions or comments before we?
I'll, I'll, I have one on this. And like I mentioned earlier, this document is, is, is the way it's broken down. It's going to mean the world to the, to the city and the citizens here because it, it really, that's, the, the bond is not going to transform the city to get to its final destination, but it's going to, this will. But because we don't, we don't start working on the efficiencies and the deficiencies that we have and looking at them and try and figure out how to fix a lot of the problems that we have internally. I really don't think that, uh, we can, we can set up for the next twenty, thirty years. The, the brick and mortar is not going to get us there this well.
Thank you.
So we'll, we'll get a copy of this out?
Councilmember King, you're good.
And, and if you notice, you do have a survey in your hands as well too. So based upon this conversation, if you can take your, just a moment at any point in time, just tell me. Uh, it does have the tax rates on there as well too. Talks about whether or not what to do with the reserve funds. It's just a three-page, uh, high level, uh, from our leadership saying, these are the things that are most important to me within that structure. We'll incorporate that into that. Mayor Protem, council, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Anyone else? Okay. Motion to adjourn. Okay. All in favor? Anyone against? Motion passed. He's meeting adjourned.